Welcome everybody to the November thirteenth meeting of the New Bern Board of Alderman. At this time tonight, the prayer is being given by Alderman Kinsey.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, Ms. Sampson. We'd like for you to come to the podium, please, and open up prayer for the New Bern Board of Alderman. Thank you.
Praise the Lord. Heavenly Father, as I bow before you tonight in the precious name of Jesus. And the Father, I thank you for all the miracles that you have permitted to our city here and our great nation, heavenly Father. Oh God, we ask a special blessing upon this meeting, heavenly Father. Oh God, touch each soul, heavenly Father. And the Father, whatever they do, that it be done decently and in order. Heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us through this and you brought us through that, heavenly Father. Oh God, just brought us through the storm, heavenly Father. No lives were lost. Father, we thank you so much for it, heavenly Father. And the Father, we thank you for all of us working together in your name, God. And the Father, if you have done anything to wound our sisters and brothers, please forgive us right now in the name of Jesus, heavenly Father. Oh God, we ask a special blessing, heavenly Father, upon our families, heavenly Father. God, direct their pathway, heavenly Father. Oh God, when traveling days are done, can't call your name anymore, heavenly Father. We ask for a resting place in your kingdom. In the Father, the Son, and the Blessed Holy Ghost. Amen.
Show me the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and with wisdom, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, may I call the robe?
Alderman Bingle, here. Alderman Harris, present. Alderman Astor, here. Mayor Alm, Alderman Kinsey, here. Alderman DeS, present. Alderman Odom, here.
Okay, at this time, before we get going, let's say, agenda good with everybody? So at this time, we're gonna have requests of petitions of citizens. And tonight, Mr. McGovern, if you'd like to come up and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Ed McGovern, I'm the owner of Time Palace Seafood Stingray Cafe at five twenty South Front Street, New Bern, North Carolina. I'm aboard the board tonight with, uh, we've had a loading zone in our property down there for forty-six years. And when they did the two-hour parking, uh, some months back, I've given it about three or four months to see how it's gonna work for them. It really hasn't played out very nice. But, uh, they have, uh, we've had two incidents down there. We've had, uh, one incident, we were unloading five thousand pounds of fish, which is a hundred boxes, fifty pounds to the box. That's twenty-five trips from the boat from the other side of the road to our cooler. Uh, one of the guys that works for me, Woody, almost got hit. This was at five o'clock at night, so you already know it's getting dark, you know, this time of night. Mullet season's in, and, uh, these guys don't get off the water between five-thirty and six-thirty, seven o'clock. So we don't have good lighting over there to start with. So in the process of him, uh, bringing the fish across the street, you know, of course, everybody's racing to get to the liquor store, and that's one of the big issues down there coming around from the palaces. You know, people, when they come around the curve, are right there on that side of the road now. And it almost hit him, you know, and that, that, that was one incident. The incident before that was about the same thing. But, um, that loading zone that was put there, uh, originally Barbara Boatworks had a loading zone there for Bob Campbell and his Outboard Motor Service. The front gate was right there at the edge of that. So that loading zone was an original loading zone that was there probably forty years or more, or whatever. But when they built that over there, the palace over there across the street, ours was still in existence. And then the two-hour thing came about, and ours was taken away and moved over there and put back in place. Well, the issue of safety for us is the number-one issue. The number-two issue is the cleanliness and, uh, cleaning up the mess over there. We have no drains over there, so when we get done packing out fish, all the slime, all the scales, everything is just left right there. We have no way to clean it up, and we've already got complaints from the palace from, you know, leaving that mess over there. We've tried to bleach it out, but, you know, really, we're not even allowed to use bleach on that over there because it's, you know, goes into the river, of course. But, um, I would like the board to look at this, and, and that other loading zone serves no purpose for anybody. It's a hazard. It's, it's too far away from the front of our store. We have a drain and water right there at our door that we go in and out of to bring the fish into the building, which we've used for forty-six years. And I'd just like the board to just, uh, look at that again, and, uh, you know, if they can, just move it across the street, you know, where it'll serve a purpose. The, the palace over there, they have loading bays, and they put this loading zone right in front of one of the bays, which, that's blocking their, you know, if we're over there, they can't get in there, you know, and if we're unloading fish, those fish, you know, are on the back of that boat, and they're in the net, so you've gotta take them out of the net, and they've all gotta be weighed up. We've gotta bring scales over there, ice over there, boxes and everything else, pack all that stuff up, and then it's gotta be run back up to the cooler. And it's just been a big issue for us for the last three or four months. And now it's winter time, and now it's dark now, and now we can't even see what we're doing. You know, and we bring lights over there, but it's still, like I said, it's a safety hazard because of the, the cars and stuff coming around the corner. So I would just like the board to look at that if they could.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGovern. Our next petition is from Mr. John Watson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Board of Alderman. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. What I'm gonna talk about is a continuation of my effort to try to get some kind of parking relief as a resident owner on Middle Street. We're caught up in the effort-
Mr. Watson, could you give the address?
Oh, two-seventeen Middle Street.
Thank you.
We're caught up in the effort to get the employees off the street. So every two hours, we have to be concerned about moving our car because there's no convenient place to park. This morning, I emailed each of you a, a small packet of information, and I think the clerk has provided it as well, in hard copy. I had a conversation with Mr. Mayor about in early July, and followed that up with a letter detailing a lot of detail about, um, the effort that we've been trying to get passed to get some kind of relief in, in the form of a parking pass or something, because we don't have off-street parking at two-seventeen Middle Street. We purchased that building in nineteen ninety-four. Sweat equity, we, we put it together, made a residence upstairs, moved my wife's business downstairs, and then later sold her business. Now we leased it to the Framing Fox Gallery. And, um, we've been there since nineteen ninety-four. Parking wasn't a problem then. You could have rolled a bowling ball down Middle Street in nineteen ninety-four and not hit a car. Luckily, now, that has changed dramatically. And, uh, we're just, I feel we're caught up in a situation that's very easily rectified. It's a simple problem. Those who don't have off-street parking in downtown business district, a simple pass or, or something to, to provide parking on the street during the times that we're there must... In the past, I've, I've never parked on Middle Street, two-hundred block, and, unless I had to for working on the building. I've always parked around the corner or in one-hundred block of Middle Street, just to respect my business neighbors. We, we often enforced parking from ninety-four up until recently, for that very reason, until the parking was enforced. We just don't have a place to park anymore. And, uh, it's, it's an issue with, there's no convenient place. I mean, there's three parking spots in downtown now for the visitors and employees, but, uh, none of them are convenient to us. They're at least a block and a half, closest one's a block and a half, maybe a block and three-quarters. And that's between two bars at late at night or after dark. I don't want my wife walking between two bars, uh, in that area to get back to the house or go get the car the next morning or whatever. So, um, it, in my mind, it's an easy solution. Like I said, those of us who do not have an off-street parking, uh, an off-street parking spot, just give us a pass. I think there's only two of us downtown in the central business district that are in this position. And, uh, I've heard it said that it wouldn't be fair because of all the other residences. Well, all the other residences have parking associated with their buildings. If, if you don't provide some kind of parking for the, uh, the new residences that move into town in a similar situation, the town's not gonna grow. People make the town grow. People living downtown make the town grow. Uh, and that's, I would just appreciate it if the board could help me in this matter and get this resolved. The parking right now, as I understand, is a, is a temporary, um, trial basis. If nothing else, give us a pass for the temporary trial basis until it's, it's rectified and worked out. So, and that pretty much summarizes my problem. Any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Watson. Our next petition is Kevin Yates.
Mayor Alderman, my name's Kevin Yates. I live at one sixteen Sweetbrier Court. I am the chairman and coordinator this year for Rees-Across America. Rees-Across America is a nonprofit national organization that, through the work of, uh, local volunteers, we raise money and sponsor Rees for all the national cemeteries across the country, and this year across the world. The New Bern National Cemetery has been around since eighteen seventy-two, and we've been involved with Rees-Across America since two thousand and ten. This is my fifth season of being involved with the Rees-Across America. It'll be my first one in this capacity. Last year, we saw tremendous growth in the number of sponsorships and the participation across the city and the entire local areas. New Bern is the official national cemetery for all of eastern North Carolina. And through the help of the city, the Alderman, the police department, and the fire department, we were able to support the outpouring of those efforts through crowd control, parking assistance. The fire department was kind enough to bring their fire truck and the flag out there for the ceremony itself. Also, last year was the first year that we were able to escort the Rees into town. So we actually coordinated those efforts, met the trucks as they were coming from Maine, and escorted them through town with the police department, the county sheriff, the fire department, Ian J., and Eastern Carolina sent a couple of their EMS vehicles out there as well. So I'm here today just to ask again for the city's support in, uh, our ability to conduct this event, further the representation of the New Bern National Cemetery. And to do that properly, we'll need the city's support through the police department, the fire department, and, uh, such, such services as those. So that's, that's all I'm asking.
There's, um, six thousand and, I mean-
Six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two headstones.
And last year, you got four thousand and so-
A little over there, yes, sir. We're about half there right now.
You would like to have six thousand and, uh, seven hundred or whatever?
Yeah, six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two.
I think you did really, I mean, it was well-supported. I know we, we really wanna do what all we can, uh, maybe on our Facebook and also our Peg channel, but we do wanna get that word out. This is very important.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think I was over the weekend, or on Friday, on through the weekend, um, looking at a lot of things to say during this period of time, Veterans Day, and, um, there were so many things could be said, but I'm, in reading so many different things, I, I liked best what Gerald MacArthur said. He said that, uh, the veterans and their own forces, um, they love peace more than anybody, any other American. And the reason is, is they are the ones that pay all the sacrifice and, and in so many ways to defend it. And so thank you for what you're doing, and, and these are, these are, these are folks that we really want to remember. Please buy a Rees. I've already bought mine, and, uh, I look forward, I'll probably buy two or three more. And are you gonna be at the farmer's market?
We'll be at Mitchell's Hardware this Saturday.
Okay, great.
This'll be our last big, uh, push over the last two weeks.
Yeah, please, please buy one.
Can you tell everybody how much they cost?
They're fifteen dollars each.
Fifteen dollars.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Anything else before we get to the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, um, I just was wondering if maybe our two requests could maybe somewhat be addressed, maybe by our city attorney or someone else? Just because I know people come here, and it is concerning sometimes, make a, a request or speak to us, and I just wanna, you know, give direction or something like that so we can either clear it up or move it along. Would it be possible, um, to at least speak to either one of those? I don't know how the board feels about that, but, um, I, you know, Mr. McGovern's here, um, the loading zone, and I will say this, Mr. McGovern, um, you know, we took away the parking, so you have no way to control the parking over there, other than, I'm gonna suggest to you again to put cones out. I've seen your truck unload, I think, three times I've gone by and watched it unload, and you're double parking, so you're not going to the loading zone, you're either double parking. If you put cones there, you certainly, you know when your truck's gonna come in, you could, I don't know who's parking there, but you certainly can control that now that it's not enforced parking.
Ed, Ed, come on up to the podium.
I'm just wondering if that, if that would help, um...
Yeah, we, we tried to put cones out there, and the problem with it is now is that because of what they're doing downtown at eight o'clock, all the people that walk and stuff come down and park in front of our store. I don't know why they do that. They park right there.
You're talking eight AM?
Yeah, at eight AM, and, you know, and they, and they leave their car there for two hours, you know? So, and the fishermen, when they come in at night, you know, they're not, you know, we don't know when they're coming in. They don't call me, they're out on the water, you know? They, they come in and show up, they know we're gonna be there at nine o'clock or whatever. Sometimes, not after it's twelve o'clock at night, they'll call me and say, hey, look, we're gonna be in at midnight, we gotta go down there and meet the boat or whatever. But the cones, we try the cones, and they just move the cones because they know that's not a loading zone, I can't enforce anything, you know, and it's just been a problem and an issue. And like I said before, when we're on the other side of the street, when we do got big loads of fish come in, you know, that is the, you know, a serious matter when somebody's running twenty-five loads back and forth. That's just one way, up that ramp, three hundred pounds of fish on each load, you know? And that's because it's either so full of parking out there, we can't get to the side of the house, or side of the building, or, you know, it's just, you know, it's just gonna hazard to try to do that, to work with that. And that loading zone is ridiculous anyhow on that side of the street. Should've never been put there to start with.
Um, and, you know, as far as the design, I don't know when, when the History Center opened, I don't, you know, again, I'm not sure about all of that. But I just wanted to see if we had anything to address to that. City attorney, is there anything as far as why? Is there any legal reasons, or can he, can he legally, he can put the cones there if he needs to?
Yes, ma'am.
Because it's not enforced?
That's right. Two options with cones. One, either park in the street. Most of the restaurants downtown will bring in eighteen-wheelers, put up cones, and just stay in the, in the lane nearest the business if they can't park directly in front of the parking space. So those are the two options.
Yeah, we, we've tried that, but the problem with it is, is that when we've got a boatload of mullet on that, on that boat, and we can't either get to the, to the sides of the street or whatever, we have to block the street, that's four hours, you know? That's start to finish, you're pulling that net out, you're taking fish out, you're putting them on. And we've had, we've been up there for forty-six years, you know, doing this business, you know? Nobody's ever complained or said anything about it because we can clean our mess up, you know? Right now, we don't have drains over there, we don't have water over there to use or any of that stuff, you know? But when we got small loads, like you say, we can get up there and do that, but now we're in mullet season.
So where's your drain? Your drain is at the, um, in your business, inside the business?
No, it's outside, right there. They, they actually put it in in nineteen seventy-seven or seventy-eight because of that problem we had right there. It's right there between the fish market and the restaurant, because our garage used to be where our restaurant is. So that way, we could, you know, be right there at the garage, and we'd go in the garage and weigh our fish up and, you know, move everything back to the coolers and stuff, you know? But now it's across the street, and we have to, you know, stop what we're doing, and, you know, it's a lot of extra work and stuff, too.
I just wanted that extra information, Mayor. Thank you. And, um, Mr. Attorney, um, is there anything that we can do to address Mr. Watson's issue?
Alderman Bingle, you, you'll recall that you and I have been working on this for-
I've had several conversations with you.
A great many months, and we, we have, uh, we have scoured, uh, the state looking for a legal solution to it. I, I certainly can appreciate the practical solution, you know? What's the harm in a few free passes? Um, but the legal issue's not one of fairness, it's a, it's a violation of our state constitution. We have a, a provision, um, that we generally call, uh, private emoluments, where the government, both state and local, cannot give individual citizens a specific benefit that it doesn't give everyone else. And that's the problem. We don't get to pick and choose who gets the parking pass or who gets, uh, certain money or funds or access. It's good for one, good for all, and, and that's our legal problem.
So you would not have to, uh, you know, so that nobody could apply for hardship or anything like that? So it'd have to be all or none, correct? So all residents of downtown would be able to park anywhere and not be enforced?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I just, uh, 'cause I know some of my fellow Aldermen have asked that question, and just wanna make it-
Right. That, that would be an option that we, we could, I could further research. I'm not a hundred percent on that one, but it, but that at least opens the door to something to think about, but-
So then would you research to see if there would be a hardship provision?
I, I, I mean residents. Um, it's not a slam dunk that all downtown residents, that a, that a, an ordinance that allowed all residents downtown to get a parking pass would work. Because we, I'm looking for a state statute that authorizes this, and the cities that have that provision have them in residential zones that abut commercial zones, where the commercial parking roll into the residential zones and drive out the residences. So I'm not a hundred percent sure we could even do it in reverse, but I've not spent the time not knowing where the board was. But recognizing that we have a number of vacant buildings downtown that would qualify for the free parking, I think the political fear and the practical fear was that you might push out the businesses again when downtown loads up with residential parking.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, at this time, let's go to the consent agenda.
Mayor, um, I would like to remove item number seven, um, from the consent agenda to be placed on the next agenda because we're gonna be adjusting the times of closing and talking to the other, um, businesses in downtown New Bern.
That is your motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, remove item number six.
Seven. Seven.
Yeah, number six.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did a six, okay. Item number seven, sorry. Yes, item number seven, I apologize.
We have a second. We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Motion carries. Item number thirteen, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. As you recall, um, we are going to have a presentation tonight by our friends of-
We adopted the consent. We didn't adopt the consent. Sorry.
I thought you were, I thought your motion was to pretty much say, yeah, delete that item.
Oh, okay. No, I thought it was just to delete that, but if that's fine, you can fix that in there and amend it.
No, no.
I wasn't paying attention.
You're good. Okay, Mr. Davis, uh, how do you wanna do that?
Well, I'm with you, Mayor. I thought the motion was to approve it, removing number seven.
And, and-
If the board didn't understand it that way, then re-
Yeah, the street's not a motion.
Okay. So it is to approve the consent agenda to remove item number seven. I apologize.
Yeah, let's recall it.
Okay.
And I'll say- And I guess you're still in favor. Motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same.
We're a little rusty today. Yeah, you know.
Okay.
We had Monday off. Three-day weekend.
Number thirteen.
It's like deja vu, Mayor. So, we're, uh, the Friends of the Cafer Park are here tonight. They're gonna do a presentation about the group's desire and plans to raise funds to restore Cafer Park to its original state. Uh, just kind of a little background, uh, some members of the Friends of Cafer Park have been, um, utilizing that field for some time now and doing adult league, um, baseball and, and things like that. So at this time, we have Mike Soares here. Uh, he's the president of, uh, the Eastern Carolina, um, I'm sorry, it's very small, but I'll let you introduce yourself, but Mr. Soares is here to, to present.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Mayor, members of the boards, I appreciate the opportunity to address this exciting project for the city of New Bern and the First Ward. Uh, my name is Michael Soares, S-O-A-R-E-S. I live at one zero nine Geneva Road in the Duburna area of New Bern. So, I put together some slides to kind of drive, drive this conversation, and if any time you have a question, please give me a call, or, uh, raise your hand, or whatever. The East Carolina Amateur Baseball League, uh, has no funding, uh, platform, and has, to this point, well, let me, let me back up here a little bit, I'm a little off-center. The East Carolina Amateur Baseball League was founded in, in two thousand and sixteen, and through contributions from generous sponsors, we've accumulated enough extra funds to improve and move toward restoring Cafer Park, which is located on a corner of Cedar and George Street. Cafer Park was built in nineteen twenty-eight, and for three decades served as the home field for the New Bern Bears of the, uh, Coastal Carolina League, which was a semi-pro league. Uh, and then later on in the fifties, it served as the home field for the New Bern Giants of the Negro Leagues. So in twenty-six, twenty seventeen, we opened up on April eighth, and we had a terrific ceremony, uh, recognizing the former players and, uh, speeches and so forth. Mr. Mayor threw out the first pitch. And we believe that there is enough public support to restore this park to what it was orig- originally. Let me, let me see if I can. All right, let me show you here. We have an artist rendering of what it could look like in the future. I believe it's on here somewhere. Oh, boy. Anyway, looking right along.
Looks like we're having a rough start, don't we?
I'm looking for a particular slide. There, there you go. That's what Cafer Park looked like prior to nine, uh, twenty sixteen, when there was no grass in the infield. And it was basically, uh, a follow, left follow with, and it was a dust ball. Since then, we have, we, the Amateur Baseball League, have invested in new sod, and this past year, we invested in the new home plate and pitcher's mound area and netting behind home plate. So the feeling was that since this was not our property, it was the city's property, that we're investing in something that we really don't own. And in conjunction with Parks and Recreation, we have worked to improve this field, and as funds continue to come in, uh, we will, uh, continue to invest in this field, and we will use the funds as seed money to develop, um, uh, yeah, look, look for a new one. So there are men, a number of small projects that we can, uh, accomplish with the limited funding that we have through donations. And one of them is the murals in Wright Field that, uh, are of the old Negro Leagues in the, in the nineteen fifties. And anyway, here we go. If I could direct your attention to this artist rendering, this is done by Sarah Affenbach of Go, Go Design Interiors Architecture. And this is what she projects the exterior of the park to look like. All right, go ahead. Go back. And if you look at, if you think about the neighboring communities in Greenville and in Moritz City, they have made a commitment to have ballparks that are up-to-date and modern, and the, the projection is that the new Cafer Park would have, you know, up-to-date restrooms, concessions, press box, the whole thing. Right now, the majority of the events there are on Sunday afternoons with the baseball league playing a doubleheader. But the long-term vision is that could be an outdoor venue for that area of the city with a projected capacity of twenty-five hundred to three thousand people, with a roof over the top of the grandstands. Uh, again, there, there's, there's the original, what it looked like for the last forty years. Now, the, on the one on the right shows the original, what it was like in nineteen twenty-eight with a roof over the grandstands. Okay. Sorry, I'm a little distracted here. The baseball league is a fee-based, uh, operation where the players pay to play. So, um, we've had some support from outside, uh, the league, and we, as I said, have decided to put it into the, into Cafer Park because we feel that that would be a better use of the funds, because we don't need the money, because, hate to say, we don't need the money because you don't say that anymore, but, uh, uh, we, uh, we feel that if we develop this park, that, that'll benefit everybody, and eventually, uh, uh, it'll get us to where we wanna go. Now, the history of Cafer Park, as I said, nineteen twenty-eight, it opened, and it was a center of activity on Sundays, when anywhere from twenty-five hundred to three thousand people gathered to watch the semi-pro baseball and the Negro Leagues. So prior to April of twenty-six, twenty seventeen, the field was, as I said, was fallow, the dust ball, and really underutilized. So we feel this, we've, we being the Friends of Cafer Park is a collection of, of concerned citizens who believe there's merit to this project and are, I've, I've agreed to work together to bring in, uh, the different, uh, supporting agencies in the, in the city. For example, the Preservation Society has endorsed, Hydra has endorsed- Society has endorsed, Hydra has endorsed, and we're moving on to others with the idea that we get, you know, good community support for the, for the project. So, I'm here tonight to ask for your approval to move forward, because we have a pretty robust plan to, to move this project forward, but it would be folly to raise money to build something if the city doesn't approve. I've talked with Mr. McCoy, the city development office, and he's, he's explained the application process, and Sarah has, is very familiar with the application process, and has volunteered for pro bono to work, help us through that process. So, without much further ado and getting into the details, I think I've given you an overview, that we want to develop that piece of property on the corner of Cedar and George Street into an outdoor venue, primarily focused, right now, on baseball. But, it's not to say it couldn't be outdoor concerts, or picnics, or whatever some organization might need to...
Mr. Hughes, could you come up and kind of update us from the city perspective?
I beg your pardon?
Mr. Foster.
Oh, yeah.
Get him to kind of give us an update from the city perspective, where we are, and what's your thoughts, Sir?
Just to give you an idea, the gentleman did speak with me, we talked about this project, I think it was about three months ago, they showed me their plans, I know they're ambitious plans, I know they've got Swiss Bear on board, there are a lot of things we need to do before this were to take place. I support the overall project, if they're able to raise the money for this, I think it would be a win-win for the city, and folks like baseball and outside activities in general, so.
So, do you want us to kind of give you a resolution of support? I mean, you're already using the facilities, are you looking for a long-term lease, or what, what would you, what would you like the city to do to support you?
Well, I think the simplest way to explain it is that if we are successful raising money, and we get major donors, that, and we tell them our plan, it would be kind of silly to accept their generosity if the city says, "Well, no, that's not, can't do that."
You need a commitment from the city.
Right.
And what type of commitment, are you looking at a 10-year commitment, a 20-year, a five-year, or what, what do you, what, what do you...
No, I think going forward, it would be a public-private endeavor that would go on indefinitely.
Mayor, what I think I hear him saying is, you know, they don't want to go out and raise the money to potentially build this, renovate it, whatever they're going to do to it, and then the city come and said, "You know, we really don't want to park here, we don't want something," so I think they want the support, they've come before Swiss Bear, and we will be the 501(c)(3) vehicle for them, for donors, to do that. I will say one thing, Mr. Soares, myself and Alderman Harris met with Mr. Bryant, is that's his name? Yeah. Mr. Bryant, who is a local artist that was part of the group that did the paintings on the back wall, there in the outfield, and put a lot of time and effort. I know that the wall has fallen, and during the storm, it, it got some damage. I see his group, which is Color Fest, as being a group I would like to see you all partner with, because they have a very vested interest in that park. And again, we want it to be a park that, a place where all of New Bern can come together in there, and he's very interested in partnering with you to fix those murals, to repaint them, to do good things like that, and I think that would be a good opportunity. Am I correct in what we've said?
Yeah, so, I agree with that part, my only concerns, one of them, someone commented on Facebook that heard the presentation, and they stated, "Where would 3,000 people park?" That was one of their comments. But mine, more or less for me to make a decision, I would probably want a more sound dynamic in regards to what is going to be requested of the city, are we maintaining it, is Mr. Foster going to be using his staff to maintain the field, so, kind of like a proposal of what is going to happen, dollar amounts in regards to if there's upgrades, is there something that the city staff has to do to find out if this type of supplies is able to be used, because I know when we were looking into getting the stage, there's certain steps that you have to go through, I would want to see all of that before I can personally say that I would want to support it, because I know I've spoke to Mr. Foster, and I'm very big on city having a baseball league, especially for the children, for any inner-city kids, and so if there's a way to incorporate that avenue, that would be another way that I would successfully agree with this, this plan, because kids need something to do, and a lot of them can't afford to go and play at Creekside or the Church League, but if the city offered some sort of league at a lower cost, it's keeping the kids off the street. And so, if you're able to raise that money, and that's incorporated in the mission, I think it would work perfect for me.
Well, the, this isn't my business, but if teams are going to play in that field that's owned by the city, that'd be something that Mr. Foster would have to, or Mr. Hughes would have to work out.
They're not, I don't, I don't think what you're saying, they want to raise the money to rehab the fields for all types of use, I don't think you want it for your exclusive use.
No, no, absolutely not.
They're just raising money to rehab it, to make it...
I mean, the city would still run it, Mr. Hughes would still run it.
Public, the...
Public private enterprise.
...partnership.
Yeah, that's right. And we've also had some interest from the Craven County Council of the Arts to redo that wall also. They've got grant money, they've ID'd...
Well, that's what we want to get connected with, Mr. Bryant, because he was the original artist, and the grant money is from the Arts Council, we've put him in touch with them, but for all of y'all to work together, that would be awesome.
Okay, fine, yeah, love to talk to you about it.
Now, is this something that we, or some of the other things we've done in the past, do we want to get a couple of aldermen and myself, or are you going to get an ad hoc of three aldermen to meet with staff and the group to work through this, to get an agreement together, or...
I don't think, I don't think they're looking for agreement, I think they're just looking to work directly with, with Foster, and as they raise funds and want to do a project, Foster and bring it to us, and I'm always...
I don't have a, I don't have an understandable misunderstanding of what I'm...
I'd like to hear some from the city attorney or city manager, on what direction they...
I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, or commit us to anything, but it sounds to me as if what the East Carolina Amateur Baseball League is looking to do is to partner with us in a way with a public-private type partnership, or public nonprofit type partnership, where they raise funds for, to facilitate the redevelopment of Cafer Park, with the understanding that they would have a continued presence and operation of that league at that particular location. Would that kind of be it in a nutshell?
Yes, I think that summarizes it pretty well, but I would also add that because of this effort, that we would get some sort of priority booking for baseball.
See, that's why, you're saying more discussion would be had.
And I, in doing so, I think it would probably be appropriate, because, you know, the seven people sitting at this board, you know, eight years from now, 10 years, 12 years, whatever, may not be sitting here, so, and, and to be fair to them, I think it would be inappropriate for them to go raise $200,000 worth of funds to do that, and then because of a switch over the board, they lose rights to use that facility. So, I think that's where some kind of agreement would probably be appropriate, or resolution with some effect, and you can weigh in, Scott, if you want to.
Yeah, I think there's two issues, one, and Foster, I'm, what did you get done? I don't think this park is on our list of city parks presently, is it, in the ordinance?
I believe it is.
Okay, so, if we've got that secured, so it is official city park, so we can put aside the concern that we're not going to use it as a park. And then the second issue is just a license agreement to make sure, and we do this with other leagues, football, other leagues that are privately operated, that they're going to have access to our field, and we can sort of do the same, the same thing here, just a question of how long we want to do it.
Well, I appreciate what you're doing, there's been a lot of activity there, and it certainly looks a lot better than it did. I mean, I'm, I'm all for supporting, I do want to be indemnified from any, you know, if we're not in control of the activity, we do have that to be concerned about.
Yes, sir.
So, and all that can be worked out.
So, who wants to take the first shot at drafting this proposal?
Well, that's why I was saying, I just wondered if you wanted to get three aldermen and some staff and yourself, your group, and sit down and work through these things, because there's quite a few, who provides the lighting, and who provides the maintenance, and, you know, I mean, it's just those things just need to work through, yeah.
You guys are using the field now, correct?
Yes.
Are you paying anything?
Yes, we pay $50 a day.
Okay, who's keeping the field up?
The city.
Okay.
Well, yes, the city is, but we, we've paid for the sod, and we've paid for other improvements.
How many games do you have a year?
Seventy.
That's awesome.
Are they free, or do you pay to come to the game?
Yeah, free, yeah, there's no admission charge to the game.
Or the games are free?
Games are free, but the players pay to play.
Okay.
They can't play unless they pay the league fee, which covers umpires' fields, insurance, etc.
Like the Sunday school leagues.
Et cetera.
This is just for adult baseball, this is not anything to do with youth.
This is adult baseball, men...
Do you only play on Sundays, or do you play other days?
We play, we play our makeup games on Wednesday nights, because we have a terrible amount of rainouts.
But Sunday is your typical day?
Sunday is, seems to be the sweet spot for everybody.
So, are you bringing other teams from out of town?
No, not yet.
But it's, that's your future plan, though, that's the...
Well, if we grow, and right now, we have, we finished the season with seven teams, and the interest is incremental every year, we started with three, three years ago, and now we have, looking at eight for the 2019 season. So, every year, it grows. And we call it the East Carolina Amateur Baseball League, because the vision was that maybe a group gets together in Greenville, and maybe a group gets together in Havlock, and maybe a group gets together, and they start their own teams, but this will be the headquarters of this league, will be right here.
I'm all for baseball.
So, you just want to get permission from the city to fix it up for the use, that you could bring other guys in, and we agreed to do half and half. I'm trying to understand myself, too.
He's working together, maybe so he can raise money.
The league will pay the city the fee to use the field, and how we pay the city is an internal thing, that we'll, if somebody comes up from Havlock, we'll assess them a fee to play in our league. So, that won't be, I mean, I don't think that's an issue for the city, we'll collect the money and pay them for the use of the field.
Okay, so, so we better understand, you want to get a group together to redevelop Cafer Park, and the only benefit that I hear out of it would be you want priority booking for your games, but does that mean you're still going to pay your $50?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
That's amazing, that, I mean, if that's all it is, then...
Yeah, we pay them, we pay the...
You want to...
We're all paid up, everything's even.
Spend their money.
Alderman, I have a question.
Mayor, I just, I agree with Alderman Harris, I think this is certainly a win-win for everybody.
Right, this project is, we're estimating a million and a half, two million dollar structure.
I think it's a tremendous investment, it kind of sets the stage for something that could be really big in the future. I appreciate the vision, the forethought that you guys have put forth, my recommendation is let the city draft up an agreement, let us present that to you, and then you guys can redline it if you have any issues, and we can go back and forth, versus having another subset of a meeting of a group, I'm just trying to...
I 100% agree with what Alderman said, that's perfect.
Yeah, and of course, we understand inflation. So, the other thing is, is that the members of the Friends of Cafer Park are some very well-backed around individuals, we've got an architect, we've talked to professional fundraisers, I mean, big-time fundraisers, and other folks who are involved in those kinds of projects. So, it's a pretty serious endeavor, and if it comes to fruition, I mean, you know, we all know how these things work, universities rejig the, the names of the stadiums, they call so-and-so field, and such-and-such stadium, and all that stuff, all that's possible, I think.
Well, I mean, is the board okay with the direction to proceed with that?
Yes, absolutely.
Is everybody with that? So, we don't need any kind of motions at this time, just, and kind of time is of the essence, I would think you would like...
Yeah, well, thank you very much, everybody.
Well, thank you for what you're doing, we really appreciate it, if you're not, if you're not going by, it's very entertaining to stop by and watch the games. Hey, you didn't tell, age, I think when we talked originally, you were, you were hoping to get eight or 10 teams, but then the age was, what, 18 to 90 or something, did you? What, what age range were the players?
Well, that is a challenging dynamic, and I'll try to do it in 30 seconds.
All right.
Ideally, the mission and the vision was that we had age divisions, we have 50 division, 40 division, 30 division, and my, what's our, our disagreement, and we have a younger division. But what we've done, just because, just to fill out the rosters, we've had to integrate, make it intergenerational, for now, and that's the plan, for now, eventually you want to... My background, I've been playing adult baseball for 10 years, and I played in an over-50 division up in New England for eight years, and that worked out perfectly.
Is it co-ed, or just men?
What's what?
Is it co-ed baseball?
No, well, you can be, we've had three women play down here.
Yeah, because I play co-ed baseball.
Is hardball, wooden bat?
Um, hard, no, not wooden.
You're playing softball.
Oh, softball, oh, okay, this is serious.
This is not softball.
Okay, yeah.
We play hard, not soft.
We need to get a team together, don't we?
I do, Mayor, just, I want to recognize Doug Amerson, who's a native New Bernian, grew up here playing ball, and played ball with my husband, but I know he's part of your group, and thank you, Doug, for all you're doing to get this done, want to recognize him.
That's very happy.
Okay, is that it?
Thank you so much, anybody have any more questions?
Any more questions?
Let's, let's work on this.
Yeah, let's do it.
This is great.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. That's good, item number 14, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board, this is an item that we've been pushing off due to the hurricane, we actually had planned this for our meeting for September the 11th, obviously, September the 13th, 14th, Hurricane Clark's had different ideas, so we canceled that meeting, but anyways, at this time, I'm going to ask Police Chief Summers and his staff to come up, and they're going to show you a video reflecting this year's National Night Out, and also recognize the communities that participated, I think we have some of them here in attendance tonight.
Good day, Unes, the city manager said this is obviously a national night out, because it's the first Tuesday of every year, a national night out of 2018 was certainly a very successful time, where we got to get neighbors out to meet neighbors, to re-establish acquaintances, and to develop partnerships with the police department, so it was very successful. What we plan to do tonight, we had invited 27 communities that were involved in this year's National Night Out, and they were planning on coming today, that we had to counsel for the storm, so we'll only have a few represented tonight, after we show the video, we ask the board to come down and greet the folks that we have, we will present them their certificates, and also a special presentation.
Thirty-five years in the making, this is a special National Night Out. New Bern Police, Fire, Carolina East EMS came out to celebrate with neighbors and friends, to take back the night from crime, and to build relationships with law enforcement. First stop... Courtyards at Burn Village. We're having a party for the residents, from the smallest to the tallest. Tom and Dolan are here with the Toons, and Elvis is in the building, quick, take a picture. They're firing up the cotton candy machine, getting the grill ready for hot dogs, and dunking the EMS guy in the dunking booth, it's all in good fun.
We have the senior population living here, you know, it's a 200-resident campus, so for us, the police coming in and making our seniors and our staff feel safe 24 hours a day, seven days a week, it's huge.
Look out, everybody, the cops are armed with clubs, and the kids are really good at Jenga. It's time to play dress-up, and then hit the dance floor for the Kiki Challenge. Next stop, home place on McCarthy Boulevard. Inside the dining room here, the tables are filling up.
Hey, come on in, how you doing?
Melanie Noble is always hustling. She arranges for each resident to be paired up at their table with a police officer for a very special lunch on National Night Out. Chicken, potatoes, broccoli salad, no complaints here, and once that's done, it's time for the sweet stuff.
Mel's Ice Cream Chops. The more stuff, the better.
But the most special treat of all was seeing our protectors transformed into ballerinas. Yep, they had to twirl their way to the front of the room and the first one there was the winner. Yeah, let's just leave it at that. Two by two, they filled in at NOAA, better known as the New Bern Older Adult Housing over on Laughlin Way. Chef prepared some hot dogs with all the fixins and this festive lunch is meant to build friendships and trust with residents and the police department.
The police department is so important in this particular neighborhood, especially with our elderly here and next door and all the things that we have going on in New Bern. We just want you all to know that we appreciate you all so much.
Officer Hollowell says ladies first on the beanbag toss. I think he's had some practice. Time for a quick pick outside and then we're off to Craven Terrace. New Bern Fire Rescue knows the importance of National Night Out. Kids enjoyed sitting in the fire truck and on the police department's motorcycles. They rubbed Officer Rhodes' head, I think that was for good luck. And then we're off to the Ghent neighborhood off of Trent Boulevard. This is Ghent's first National Night Out event and we are really excited for them about the turnout. Neighbors came from all corners of this community and they even brought their furry children. Sergeant Lewis talks about police response times and they made Captain Fuller stand on a Yeti cooler to get his message across.
Some of the ways that we encourage you to help prevent some of the crime is keep your porch lights, your floodlights, things like that on. Make sure you lock everything up. We have found historically with break-ins of especially vehicles, that the vehicles are unsecured. So make sure you lock your buildings up, lock your cars up.
After the serious messages, it was now time for glow sticks, playing some cornhole, investing in community pride with stickers and magnets and some group photos, too. Time to bounce over to Evans Mills where we find the real fire chief supervising the event. We also found Captain Lucas talking to a police department alum. This is a quick trip, it's time to blow some bubbles and then we head over to Duffy Field. There is no hiding from National Night Out. Sergeant Hargett plays peekaboo and look who's driving now. Kids take the wheel of the police cruisers, all part of the fun in building relationships between the community and the PD.
So we can build a trust between the community and the police department. That's our number one goal because in order for us to do our job, we must have the trust of the community.
Don't fly away just yet. Historic Downtown Residents Association, or HYDRA, has taken over Bear Plaza for their National Night. Here, the Bear City Fudge Company, known for their endless supply of delicious fudge in all kinds of unique flavors, they're offering free ice cream cones to everyone who's participating in National Night Out. Decisions, decisions. Okay, I think I'll take cookies and cream. Outside, the evening has gone to the dogs. As Officer Katrina Longmire, the police department's lead organizer of this community celebration every year, she says hello to residents and friends. The cruiser convoy heads over to Ward Four where Colony Estates is celebrating NNO just off of Rowan Oak Avenue. It's time to get in line for some of these yummy grilled goodies. Being neighborly here means a family-style gathering, everybody eating together, even with your shades on, while Alderman Kinsey makes the rounds, answering citizen questions and concerns. Across the way in Old Town off of Country Club Road, cuteness overload as this kid tries on a big bike for size. This community is known for great sidewalk chalk and they sure did not disappoint this year. You can tell the PD was here and they topped off this successful summertime party with police and fire with the best thing ever, ice cream. Time to go to New Bern Towers. Community policing here starts with the little ones. Police and fire spread out to mingle and meet new residents and greet the longtime neighbors. The temptation to shake your booty is spreading. And the best part about New Bern Towers National Night Out is it's two parties in one. Across the street at St. John Missionary Baptist Church, there's more food, fun, and fellowship.
Thank you, New Bern's finest, thank you!
We found one fine pooch looking for some crumbs and police and fire made out like bandits with Dream Solutions Dream Ice. Part ice cream and a whole lot of deliciousness. But the funny part here was when the camera came around, the officers only asked for a small cone, but when we left, they got a double scoop. We spun over to Trent Court next, hugs all around on this 35th anniversary. These folks know how to show their community spirit. Our friend Maggie and Officer Garrard take their spirit right on down the slide on the playground. Then they hand out school stuff and some fun activity books to the kids. We shot some hoops, made some memories, and hung out with some of our favorite ladies. Strike a pose, y'all, it's time to keep this party going. Right on over to Riverside. Animal Control Officer Vince Bryant has some fierce competition in firefighter Trent Jarman. They're playing a game of cornhole and the game is drawing a crowd of spectators at the high court in this neighborhood. Lieutenant Conway gets a hug from Alderman Bengal and then the sweet smells of dessert waft through the air and sure enough, they're cutting the blueberry pie. We were just about to leave when former Alderman Blackiston showed up. He had the coveted homemade, still warm, right from the oven banana pudding. We had to turn around so that Chief, cough, cough, and his entourage could have some banana pudding. In Ward Five, we head over to Pleasant Hill Park. Alderman Best is busy handing out school supplies, not just the ones donated by Target, but baskets full donated by the community. Mark Best is obviously surprised to see us and Chief takes a moment to speak to participants about reporting suspicious activity in the neighborhood.
Yo, the old saying is if you see something, what?
Say something.
Right, you see something, say something. Because a lot of times we can ride through your community and we don't know who doesn't belong in your community, so we need you guys to tell us who don't belong in your community.
Over to Ward Two, here come the cops down Moore Avenue to the Pembroke Community Center, ready to help take back the streets from crime. If you don't know what's going on in this neighborhood, go to the information center. This community bonds over good food, fellowship, and fun. And look who we found managing the food line, retired police department Captain Powell.
How are you doing? This side is really smooth.
Outside, there's a tiger in the bounce house and two beasts on the basketball court. Lieutenant Daniels always offers to play ball with the kids when he's here for National Night Out. Everyone loves to watch this ball battle that's brewing. And while all of the wallflowers stepped aside, it was time to hit the driveway, or dance floor and boogie with Alderwoman Harris and our PD. As the sun began to set, we made our way to our last stop, Kings Row. They know how to put the "out" in National Night Out. It's one of the biggest block parties that we see during NNO. Callahan Bandstand provides the tunes, he is a fixture here. And the food and dessert go on forever. I think everyone must bring their favorite recipe and I hear the hot dogs are pretty good. The bikes are nice and shiny, ready for picture-taking. Artists put their best work on the pavement, but above all, the night belongs to dancing. And just before the party ends, Chief Summers reminds everyone that keeping neighborhoods safe takes good communication and a tight-knit community.
And that shows also in the way that you look out for each other in your community. That's how you keep this community so safe because you know each other, you look out for each other and we really appreciate what you do.
So I want to call your name if you're here. Carolina Colors? Carolina East Medical Center EMS? Costa Photo Club? Colony Estates? Court Guards at Burn Village?
Thank you, I appreciate it, thank you.
Craven Forest? Craven Terrace? Duffy Field? Evans Mills? Historic Downtown Resident Association? Historic Riverside Neighborhood? Would you like to? Thank you, thank you. HYDRA? Anyone from Riverside? Home Place of New Bern? Kings Row? The Meadows? New Bern Fire Department? New Bern Older Housing, Adult Housing, NOAA? New Bern Towers? Old Town? Old Town? Pembroke? Pleasant Hill? Selhorn Heights? Tiburna? Represented today, I appreciate it. Target? Trent Court? St. John Missionary Baptist Church? And Sunnyside?
This award is actually an award of excellence to Officer, excuse me, Officer Katrina Longmire. Do you get to stand by? Officer Longmire, in April 2008, you were assigned to the recruitment office in professional standards. During your tenure, you have worked alongside several departments within the city to include human resources. As the recruitment officer, you not only maintained your daily duties but worked on such high-level community projects such as National Night Out. This event was usually held in Union Point Park with all communities and groups coming together at this location. In 2012, National Night Out became an event which needed additional planning and cooperation among communities. Every year, you completed a task board which detailed officer information, caravan groups, and arrival times to specific communities. This required several planning sessions throughout the year between community members and the department. Ultimately, several communities were able to host their own festivities. Since this change, the agency has seen participation on a large scale from neighborhoods within the city. These areas include but are not limited to Carolina Colors, Craven Forest, Craven Terrace, Duffy Field, Evans Mills, Ghent, Historic District Resident Association, Historic Riverside, Kings Row, New Bern Towers, Old Town, Pembroke, Pleasant Hill, Selhorn Heights, Tiburna, The Meadows, and Trent Court. Your dedication to the mission of the New Bern Police Department has never wavered. Your abilities have strengthened the community relations and made positive impacts on our community and the citizens of New Bern. It is in keeping with our agency standard that you are now presented with this award of excellence.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. As you all are aware, we had some discussion recently regarding opportunity zones. Congress enacted the Opportunity Zone Program in December of 2017 as part of tax reform. Alderman Harris, I know that you, Alderwoman Harris, you attended Washington DC's or the National Legal Conference meeting in DC and you brought back some information regarding opportunity zones and wanted to find out a little more about it. I know there has been some program dynamics that have been developed over the past year and ultimately, I know our staff have been working on the Opportunity Zone Program and getting a little bit more knowledgeable of it and how we can implement potential for opportunity zones here in New Bern. One of the things that is important was being, having an opportunity zone identified within your area. We were very fortunate in that an opportunity zone was identified here in New Bern. And basically, the program offers incentives for qualified investors who reinvest in low-income communities. So tonight, we're very fortunate to have a representative from the North Carolina Department of Commerce, the chief economic development planner for the Northeast Prosperity Zone and Main Street and Rural Planning Center, it's a very long title. But the gentleman's name is Mr. Lee Padrick and he is here tonight to give us a little bit more information about opportunity zones. Mr. Padrick?
Thank you and thanks for having me on the agenda tonight. And that's a really tough act to follow. I don't know if I feel it being as exciting as that when I'm talking about tax law. Anyway, you're right, my title is long and it's Christmas party season, so I'm going to bore a lot of people soon with that. I'm Lee Padrick, I'm the Northeast Prosperity Zone Planner. You guys are obviously in the Southeast Prosperity Zone. Our Southeast Prosperity Zone person moved to another position and we're filling that position, so me and one of my colleagues are filling in in the southeast. But my office is in Greenville and I would have been here earlier, but I was on Highway 43 and the traffic, I got behind, somebody driving 45 miles an hour the entire way, so I apologize for running a little late. Anyway, I'm going to give you a short presentation on opportunity zones and then we'll have some questions at the end and I'll politely tell you that I don't know. So, as you guys are probably aware, opportunity zones were created at the end of last year with the federal tax law changes. And there are tax incentives for qualified investors to rein- And there are tax incentives for qualified investors to reinvest unrealized capital gains into low-income communities. The slide says 2.5 trillion in unrealized capital gains. I was reading an article this afternoon that says it's probably closer to 6 trillion in unrealized capital gains. And last year, there was 15 billion in realized capital gains in North Carolina. So even if some of that money in North Carolina makes it to this endeavor, that's such a significant amount of money. So you'll see this map up here. The dark splotches on the map are where at the beginning of the decade, positive business establishment was taking place. And if you can see where North Carolina is there, it's where you would expect it. Along our coastal areas, which are growing very fast, and our Piedmont areas, which are growing also, but in other parts of North Carolina, we're obviously not growing as fast or even declining in population and growth. So as we said, this was enacted at the end of last year with the tax law changes. It's, IRS is the overseer of Opportunity Zones, but it's not a typical federal program, if you will. There's no reporting requirement, requirements, there's no state oversight or investment mandates. So it could connect investors to overlook, to use upon opportunities in low-income areas or low-income census tracts, and we'll talk about that in a second. And particularly, it's an opportunity to invest in equity investments and stage growth, and growth-stage businesses as real property. So what problems does this new idea address? It promotes biopitality in areas that are often overlooked, that have some great potential. It could help with workforce, inventory, and housing in areas where rising rents are forcing many of the workers to outside the areas. And in coastal, in the coastal areas, you can kind of relate to that. Investment infrastructure, I still haven't seen how that's going to work, and I'm really interested in how it will. Investing in startup businesses that have potential for rapid increases, and upgrading the capacity of underutilized assets to capital improvement investments. So there's three parts to it. It's a temporary tax referral, as we talked about, for capital gains that are invested in an opportunity fund. There's a step-up basis for leaving those unrealized capital gains in the fund for a certain period of time. And there's permanent exclusion from taxable gains or taxable income of long-term gains. We'll talk a little about how that works in a second. So real quickly, what's a low-income census tract? It's the same as the new market tax credit definitions that came about in the early 2000s. And that's areas that are 80, that have 20% or more poverty, and 80% or less of the median state household income. State household income right now, I think, is a little bit over $50,000. This map here has a lot of blue blotches on it. Blue blotches are the areas that are the low-income census tracts around the nation. And once again, in North Carolina, they're where you would think they would probably be. You can see once again that the Piedmont and the coastal areas of North Carolina are growing. So we'll flip back to that map, you can see where the business establishment was. It almost mirrors where those low-income tracts are not. So North Carolina has, probably half of its census tracts are low-income census tracts. 98 counties have at least one. Craven County has three, I believe. 39 counties have less than five, six counties only have one. I still need to look up two counties that don't have them, I'm getting really curious about that. So that's 1,007 census tracts in North Carolina. So Commerce was tasked with giving a list of those low-income census tracts to the Treasury Department and have them certified, and we did that back in the spring. The criteria we looked at were at least one in every county. And I believe there's still two that don't have that, so I'm kind of curious, once again, where those are. Twenty-five, you can only designate 25% of your low-income tax credit, oh, your low-income census tracts. Those recommendations came locally, typically through the county manager's office or the County Economic Development Commission, and with, in some regions, with the help of our councils of government. State industrial site development initiatives were considered and tracts hit by Hurricane Matthew. So out of that 1,007, 252 were chosen in North Carolina. Here's where they are on the map. You can see in eastern North Carolina, I believe all of Hyde County, with the exception of Okeecoque, is an Opportunity Zone. You can see in Craven that you guys have one.
Oh, we had two in Craven County.
You had three overall, but you had one that was certified. And I'll show you where it's at. It's right here, and I believe it's east of Queen Street, George Street, if you can picture where that is.
What's the difference between certified and uncertified?
Well, as I said, you had three. There were some recommendations made locally of where those should be, and then looking at the criteria the state had set out, using those, every county got at least one. Some counties got more than one. So this is where yours was located and was certified. So it will be in place until the time that the legislation is changed or amended.
Who's office made that certification, I'm curious?
As I said, I don't know exactly where it came from in your county, typically it came from the county manager's office.
I'm at the state level.
Oh, Department of Commerce sit down, there was a group of folks up in our Raleigh office, and they looked at those in comparison to some census, some other census numbers, and using those criteria we talked about. So what is an opportunity fund? It's an investment vehicle where you can take unrealized capital gains and invest in new projects or growing, startup or growing businesses. How do you establish it? Where's, as you see, a strikeout in that. We were supposed to get some guidance from the IRS in late summer, and here we are, five weeks from winter, and we still really haven't gotten clear guidance on that. So I suspect it's probably coming after the first of the year, and I'd be highly surprised if it didn't. But what we've, are led to understand is that to certify as an opportunity fund, it's as easy as another form on your tax return. So we're, and that's what we're hoping for, that it won't be a really, you know, tough process for folks to invest, particularly at the local level, if they're interested in investing in their communities. But we're still waiting to see that guidance, you know, there's some, there's some investment firms that are already trying to set these up, but we're also hoping that local investors can invest in their local communities. Yes, sir?
Is it population-driven?
What's that?
The tax credit. Let's just say, for instance, you have a larger city. Would a larger city be more tax-driven for something of that nature? I'm just curious, I'm just asking a question, that's so far out.
Well, tell me if I answered your question. I believe Charlotte has six or seven census tracts that are designated. I believe Raleigh has three to four. So I guess the answer to your question is yes and no. Yes, yes, in our larger areas, the population, there are, there were more Opportunity Zones chosen and certified, if that answers your question. Yes, sir. And as I said, particularly in the eastern part of the state, I'm trying to remember if any other of our counties got more than one, there may be a few. But typically, our census tracts are much larger geographically, so that may be the reason that there was only one chosen in many of our eastern North Carolina communities. Like I said, Hyde County, just the entire mainland, is one census tract. So that was, that was obviously chosen as a theirs. So there's three main tax benefits to investors. An investor can defer capital gains by investing some or all of those gains from the sale of property or exchange of property, but within 180 days of the sale. If they leave that money there for five to seven years, they can reduce their taxes by 15%. I think it's 10% for the first five, and 5% for the seven-year mark. By investing that money, if they leave it there 10 years, any appreciation of that investment would be tax-free, if that makes sense. So what is Opportunity Zone property? It's property that was purchased or acquired after the first of the year. To be considered Opportunity Zone property, the original use of the property is required to begin with the Opportunity Zone fund, or is required to substantially improve the property. Substantially, I believe, we're still waiting for that guidance, is 50% or more in this particular instance. So what, what kind of qualified Opportunity Zone businesses would work in a situation like this? At least half of that, 50%, a substantial, must be invested in business that takes place in the Opportunity Zone itself. Substantial assets of the business can be used, must be used in the Opportunity Zone, and the assets of the business have to be a majority real property or investment. It can be, it can only be 10% or less of investment assets. So that's that sliver of the pie up there. The only businesses that wouldn't qualify are certain sin businesses, like liquor stores, gambling operations, things like that. So how would this work? You make, have a private capital investment that's subject to capital gains. You put that in the Opportunity Zone, the Opportunity Fund, as we talked about. And then that money is invested in capital or profits, interest in a domestic partnership, stock in a, in a business, or tangible property used in the trade of business in that fund. Our role at Commerce is, it's not a state program, so our role is trying to direct people to ways how to get involved in this. We think it's going to be great for, particularly for our rural areas. Right now, we've done a couple of things at Commerce. Florence slowed us down a bit with, where we were at on the priority list moved back up quite a bit on this, but, so right now, we've made a list of our Main Street communities, which New Bern is one, that are affected by this. We've made a list of our communities that are non-Main Street communities that have an Opportunity Zone within their town limits. What we were working on right around the time of the hurricane was developing a workshop at state level, where we'd bring in some folks from the federal level to give us a better understanding of how this would work and how it would, we would look in practice. That meeting has since tentatively been moved back to December, and I suspect it's probably going to be up for the first of the year before we set that date and have that meeting. One thing that we're trying to do at Commerce is to support communities, point them to resources, put together some of the best deals in their community that can be considered for the Opportunity Zones. And having that list of investment-ready opportunities so that folks that want to invest in it can find them. In closing, if you want more information on this, on Opportunity Zones, the website's up here, but the easiest way is to Google NC Commerce and Opportunity Zones. You'll find the map that I showed up there, and you can kind of zoom in and see exactly where those zones are around the state, and it gives you some more information about how this would look in practice. Yes, ma'am?
I have a question. Will there be any time that the other two tracts that were not certified, we have the ability to maybe have a conversation with the county managers to see if they can send up some sort of request to get those approved? Or will it just be one?
That's a good question, I've been asked that several times. And my understanding is that it won't be revisited until the legislation at the federal level is revisited. And what I'm finding is, there's a lot of our communities around the state, this was kind of new to them, and the certification process possibly went through with a whole lot of local input. I don't know if that's the case here, but that's what we're finding around the state. And I think most likely, in most situations, you know, there was a very limited window to get those in to the Treasury Department. So we reached out to the councils of government, the county managers, and the county economic development offices. I'll be happy to try to answer any more questions, or say politely, I don't know.
Okay, any other questions?
My only question after that would be, overall, because I was familiar with most of the information you provided, is there any information that's been released on how someone is actually able to access these funds? Like if someone's investing, like how does that, how does that work? Is it, because people are confused, it is an actual fund that people will be able to apply to, you know? How does that work for, like if I have a business that meets the qualifications within the census tract, and I want to be able to get someone to invest in maybe redeveloping it, or we have a redevelopment commission, and the tract where this is, Trent Court, has been a big topic of discussion. How can maybe the housing authority reach out for these funds of helping with redevelopment? How is that process order?
As I said, that's what we're hoping to figure out at that state-level workshop. Possibly going to be in December, but after the first of the year. And that's when I'll politely say, I don't know. Because we're hoping that it won't be as formal as what we, we kind of hear it may be, that it may be as simple as, as folks investing, local folks investing in local businesses with this addition of a tax form. Because that was what we were, we were to understand at the beginning. So that's, we're hoping that's what the IRS releases as its guidance, guidance moving forward. But right now, I can't answer that question, because I don't really know how it would look. What I've been telling towns is, pull together a handful of your best investment-ready deals so that as it moves forward, your community's already positioned to show potential investors the best opportunities in your town or in your Opportunity Zone.
Do the projects have to be shovel-ready, or just?
The term is investment-ready, so, and moving forward, I'll tell you, the Development Finance Institute in Chapel Hill is great about helping you pull those together. I don't know that those, all those projects that they have in their prospectus are shovel-ready, but they can help you put together a good package that could attract the eye of investors.
Okay, I think that's it, and appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me.
Number sixteen, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, mayor members of the board. At this time, I'd like to ask the police chief to come up, DeSantis Summers, and he's going to give the board an update regarding a search for a part-time animal control officer that was authorized by the board a couple months ago.
As you're aware, a lot has happened since we last updated the board. We have opened the animal control position up as a part-time position. We have received some 12 to 13 applications for the part-time position, and we currently have one or two that we are looking at, one possibly strong. But none of the applicants had any direct experience. So staff's concern is, obviously, we hire a person, we train them, and because it's a part-time position, we possibly could lose them after all the training. But that's where we stand right now.
So chief, we appropriated $25,000, because I'm very concerned about this. We've got to find a way to fix this. You know, we used to have two, two officers, two animal control officers, and the position was cut. So, you know, I'm still trying to get a handle on, you gave me, I think there was a number of $60,000, am I correct, that you said it would take for a full-time position? Is that still your number?
I think it was somewhere between 50 and 60, yes, if my memory serves correctly. I think it was somewhere between 50 and 60, yes, if my memory serves correctly.
Because I don't know that that's what our current animal control officer, you know, that's, are they equal, is somebody coming in at more money? I'm concerned about that, and I'm trying to find the best way for us to do this and get what we need, because this issue of animals is just getting out of control. I'm really concerned about it, and you've trained officers, you put that time and effort into training officers to help the animal control officer, but we need, we just need to, because we're, it's the nighttime, it's the weekends, you know, it's hot and sick. I'm really concerned, I don't know how the rest of y'all feel, but if we have to put more money in it, then that's what we have to do, but I don't know that 60 is the number or 50. I mean, I want to make sure we're equal in what we're doing.
Yeah, I believe that figure included benefits and uniforms and things, and I think it wasn't just salary.
Okay.
So you're saying the main concern right now is that you're not having any qualified applicants apply? Is that one of the?
I wouldn't say they're not qualified, I would say that they don't have any direct experience.
Okay.
Motion, Chief. Chief, I think that this, you're correct on the situation, putting a lot of time in it. I think in hiring someone full-time, that to take care of the problem that we're dealing with now, I think that's the right way for us to go. And I think that's up to the board, that we make the decision to give you that full-time person, because the situation is out of control, and we need to take care of that.
Well, I would personally say there's a lot of situations that are out of control, you know, poverty, homelessness, and I love the animals, I'm okay with keeping it part-time, and I feel like we, you know, you're interviewing this person, and you have the conversation, and just be realistic, I mean, if we're training you, is this something that you see in five years? If not, then keep it open until we find something that, where someone wants the position, and they know what their job duties are, because I totally agree with you in regards to, I would not want to pay to get someone trained, hire them, and then they find another job, you know what I mean? But I don't think we need a full-time, I'm not going to vote to put more money into the animal control officer. I feel like if we don't have someone on staff that is working it now, and then we have the other one, I'd rather pay for a full-time officer that does an officer's job outside of the animals, but that does not mean that I don't love the animals and I don't care about them. I'm just saying, to me, there's a lot of pressing issues, and to give more money for a full-time position, you know, I'm not okay with that.
Okay, Alderman.
Chief, when we made that addition, I believe it was $25,000 to put toward this effort, I think we sort of left it open-ended, not necessarily that it would be for personnel, but it could be used for training, or contractual services, or what have you. Is there an opportunity that you could use some of that additional funding to get an existing officer or core group of officers trained? So when we have the, because what I'm concerned with are the after-hours calls.
Yeah, that's the problem.
It's the weekend, and the nighttime seems to be when we have those calls, and that's when our ACO is not working. But if we had someone else on staff that had that training that could go address these issues, I think that would kind of take care of at least the concerns that I've had.
And we have done that, we've trained the sergeant, Lieutenant Marissa Brown was trained before she got promoted, we trained the sergeant, we also trained an officer, but we find it very difficult for them to fill in, given their current duties also, and being called out, sometimes they're working overtime on their regular job, and then being called out on other animal control jobs has made it difficult. So we have done that, yes, sir.
One of the issues too, Alderman Odom, was that they'd get there, and either they couldn't handle the dog, because there's certain requirements, and they're not, they couldn't handle the dog, or they didn't have the vehicle to put the dog into, so that was, you know, we'd send an officer out there, and then I'd get a call from Humane Society or something, that they couldn't handle the issue.
Now, the officers who have been trained do have access to that vehicle, so they can handle the dog, but what Ms. Bingle was talking about a lot of times, the street officer responds to those calls, and obviously, they're in their regular police car, and Ms. Bingle was absolutely correct, they can't, they don't have the tools to do it.
Mr. Stevens, do you have any suggestions?
Well, you know, the difficulty is, and we knew this all along, was finding a qualified, trained individual that was going to be able to fulfill the duties of an animal control officer in a part-time status. We knew that all along, and I think you recognize that that was an issue. You know, we can continue to look and continue to hope, but that's more time that the position sits there vacant, and the duties for the help or assistance is not there or being performed. So it's either that, or if the board wishes to allocate more money for a full-time position, then we're more than happy to go about advertising and trying to find and fill that position.
Or possibility of partnering with the county and seeing if they possibly could, you know, share in this cost, and maybe?
I think Chief probably can.
And we have reached out to the county, they now have a new director of their animal shelter, had conversations with them, and they were almost in the same boat that we are, and we asked them, I believe when Vince was off, if they could come and answer calls, and we've asked them in the past, because they have only, I think, one, possibly two at that time, when we asked, for the whole county. Getting here for any type of call took an extended period of time, and so when we asked this recent time, they said, well, can we use Vince in the county, because they're so short-staffed?
I mean, maybe possibly for weekends and the times that we are having this problem, maybe we could contract out with the county if they had any of these sources. I'm just, you know, just up from $25,000 to $60,000, I mean, this is something we normally do at a budget time.
I agree.
We have reached out to animal control officers, and I think it was Riverbend, and some other jurisdictions, about the possibility of working weekends for us.
Right.
And because of their schedule, they said it's just too much on them.
Mayor, at one time, we had talked about hiring an outside contracting service, and I think the attorney has some concerns with that. Could you, could you maybe, I hate to put you on the spot, but is there a reason why it's because, I believe you made a comment something about we couldn't have an outside contracting firm basically enforce our ordinance, it would take a sworn officer?
Exactly, that's it.
But, well, my question is, is if, yes, in a perfect world, it'd be nice to have two or three of these full-time officers, but we all know we don't live in a perfect world, and we do have some other pressing needs, but if there was a stopgap that we could do with $25,000 to somehow have some sort of help with this issue while, you know, a contractor or a, I hate to use the word exterminating firm, but you see those on TV where, what's his name, Wild Billy or something, they call him on Discovery Channel, he comes and gets an alligator out of the pool. I mean, if there's something like that that we could look into, and then if there was some enforcement aspect, an officer, a regular officer could respond and help and aid with that, would be my fault.
Well, we have someone that's available to do that now. We've got a group, the Craven Humane Society, Colonial Capital Humane Society, they've offered their assistance there. What is required is a police officer on the scene, and if the police officer sees that the dog needs to be picked up, then he can call these people, and they can come around and pick up the dog for him, you know, and take him to their shelter. See, right now, if we pick up the dog at 2:00 in the morning, which we've had animal control out picking up dogs at fire scenes at, you know, all hours of night, there's nowhere for them to go. They can't carry them anymore. So at least with the Colonial Capital Humane Society, they can pick them up and take them to a shelter.
So is there a way for us to contract with them, or work out something where if they are able to do it, like he said, are we able to take the $25,000 and use some of that money to maybe get another vehicle, or invest in upgrading something so that?
I think they had their own vehicle, so.
I just, I think that we have a new sheriff.
Oh, like you had donations?
Yeah.
And I think, I think, I think I've heard that the sheriff, that newly elected sheriff has some different ideas about this whole situation.
I see.
And I would just say, maybe we, staff or whoever, contact the new sheriff and see what's going to happen, what's going to happen if there's some type of partnership with whatever program he has, and if that doesn't work, we can go back and discuss.
I agree.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. Maybe for January, is that when they get sworn?
December 3rd.
December 4th.
Oh, December, okay. So maybe sometime later that month, or even in January, could set up a meeting and talk with them, and I believe currently, the county, the animal enforcement is under the Health Department.
I think it's.
Right, and I think that they're going to change it to the Sheriff's Department, and then maybe we can have a working relationship, and maybe it's something we do in conjunction with the county and Capitol, Colonial Capitol, and maybe there's a way we can all participate.
I know that when we met and talked, I think that we had some concern about losing, we don't want to lose control of the way we, our procedures are, and so that's just something I think we need to talk about.
That's always the case.
Thank you, Mark.
I said that's always the case, we've got to get past that, and hopefully, we've got some new members on both sides of the board.
Yeah, I agree.
Because the reality is, is everybody that's sitting in the city of New Bern, that pays city of New Bern taxes, pays county taxes too.
Right.
And, you know, we, I can easily make the argument that we're not getting the benefit from our county taxes for some of these services that they offer outside the county. So I think it's a new day, it's time to start having some of those conversations.
I agree.
I would love to be able to see a vet, I mean, I don't know, I didn't look up the job description, obviously, you have to be a sworn police officer, but it'd be nice, oh, you don't?
No.
You don't?
To be an animal control officer?
Oh, you don't?
No.
Well, then, I mean, that would be nice if we could, you know, have a veteran that would, you know, would like to, how is it being advertised?
As an animal control officer?
No, no, is it like on Facebook and all that?
How many applicants did we have?
We have had 14 so far.
14? Would the board be interested, and would you like to either get the three Aldermen to meet with the new sheriff about this, or do you want the staff to meet with?
I'll meet with him about it.
Okay, so the three of you, who's going to do it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Who's the third one? We got Bob, Alman, Aster, and Alman, who's?
I'll be third.
Alman Kenzie, okay?
All right, there you go.
You guys doble and figure out what time to meet. Madam Clerk, you got that?
I do.
Okay, so will we take any more action tonight on this?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Skyline number 17, consider, okay, Mr. Stevens, line number 17.
Thank you, Mayor members of the board.
What is going on today?
Item number 17 is a resolution to initiate the upset bid process for 570 NC Highway 55 West. Edwin Franklin Senior submitted an offer of $6,750 for the purchase of this property. It's a vacant lot, has a tax value of $13,500, and the offer represents 50% of the value. This was a property that was jointly owned by the city and the county through a tax foreclosure in 2017. The total taxes due on both of the taxing authorities was $4,860.56. 2017, December of 2017, the county transferred its interest to us. Subsequently, we demolished the structure that was on it, and there was significant cost to that, I think it was close to $7,000 with regards to the demolition cost due to some asbestos and contamination and the deteriorated state of the property. So we do have some costs in the demolition and disposal of the demolition materials. If the upset bid process is approved, and there are no additional bids, the city will receive full proceeds from the sale, less the cost of the advertising. Happy to answer any questions you have, and there's a memo in your pocket from Ms. Block.
Board?
There is no questions? No questions? And then I would ask the board to adopt a resolution to initiate the upset bid process for 570 NC Highway 55 West.
Second. Okay, motion, and second, is there a discussion? Let's have a roll call, starting with Alman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kenzie? Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Aster?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number 18.
Thank you, Mayor members of the board. Item number 18 is a resolution approving the contract with the Housing Authority of New Bern for the sale of a portion of 703 Carolina Avenue. As you are aware, we've discussed this many times, the Housing Authority of New Bern has requested to purchase this property, or a portion of it, for the purpose of developing mixed-use housing and relocating some of its residents of Trent Court to this particular property. There's a copy that was given to you under separate cover, that is the resolution and the proposed contract, and there are also some exhibit maps that show the property that they are looking to acquire from us, and we are happy to answer any kind of questions you have. The offer to purchase is $455,000 for a little over seven acres, and some of the conditions are, the first year, the property will basically just be the purchase price. The Housing Authority plans to submit an application to get this approved through the tax credit project or through the state, and in doing so, they hope to hear back sometime in August. If that is approved, their intent is to close on the property sometime in February of 2020. If they are unsuccessful in that first application process, they have an option to basically purchase with, that is non-refundable for the cost of $10,000, to do another application process, and obviously, the timeline is still the same. They would submit the application in January, hope to hear in August of 2020, and then if they get it, they would look to close in February of 2021. And there's also one stipulation in there to where if the second year they get approved, and they wish to push that to a later date, I think in June, they could pay an additional $10,000. But basically, that's the nuts and bolts of what's in the contract for the sale. Happy to answer any questions, attorney and myself.
Okay, board have questions?
Mayor?
Yeah.
Just a question, I'm curious, the timing, obviously, for August is when they would be notified if they received the tax credit award. Why is it six months after that to close in February? I'm sure there's a reason behind that.
Generally, it has to do with putting together the financing package and going through all of the different application processes that, and there may be some more detail, Marty, that you can, but that's, essentially, it's putting together, once you're made aware of the approved project, then you have to go through the financing. We typically kind of see these for these tax credit type projects, once they get approved, it takes a little while for them to actually start construction. I think that was the same thing with the one over on Third Avenue, it probably took them probably a year after they were approved, where they actually started construction almost. So it's generally to do with the financing, the closings, and everything else on the financing package.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, and what the board's pleasure on this item?
If there's no other questions, we make a motion to, okay. Well, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a contract with the Housing Authority of New Bern for the sale of a portion of 703 Carolina Avenue for the purpose of developing mixed-use housing.
Second. Motion by Alderman Best, second of Alderman Kenzie, is there any further discussion? Let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
No.
Alderman Aster?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number 19.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 19 is a resolution approving a revised school resource officer contract with Craven County Board of Education for local elementary schools. This was a resolution that was approved previously by our board on August 28, 2018. The city attorney has requested a couple of revisions to the contract, provide some clarity, which were not incorporated into the contract, which had to go back before the Board of Education for their approval, and then ultimately wanted to bring it back to all of y'all, just to put the stamp on it as finalized. Essentially, there was a couple provisions in there that, there was not enough specificity with regards to indemnifications, as well as specificity with regards to the off part, the off time of the school resource officer, basically, they would have them during the school year, there was no, I guess, cutoff date, so that if they wanted to have tennis practices, and they needed a school resource officer in June or July, or something like that, then technically, under the existing contract, we would have been required, I guess, or somewhat gray area of requiring our school resource officer to attend that. Otherwise, they would need to basically compensate us for that, school resource officer use during those off-season times. So essentially, the funds and the... those off-season times. So essentially, the, the, the funds and the, the amount that they're contributing, uh, annually is the same per officer. Uh, but, uh, anything else that you're aware? That does basically clean up the contract.
Board, have questions?
Mayor, if not, I'd like to make a motion. We adopt a resolution approving a revised school resource officer contract with Craven County Board of Education for local elementary schools.
Second. Motion by Alderman Odom, second by Alderman Kenzie. Is there further discussion? See, now let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Uh, before I vote, I want to make a, a statement here. Um, when we initially talked about this, I voted no on this because I felt that Craven County should be responsible for supplying, uh, uh, resource officers in schools, because as Alderman Odom stated, um, previously, and I state myself, I think as city citizens, uh, we pay a city tax and a county tax, and we really don't get a lot for our county tax. And I think this burden of expense should be put on, um, the county. So in my voting for this, I'm gonna vote no again.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Aster?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle? I'm with Alderman Best, and I'm gonna vote no. Um, but I will, I wanna do, I do wanna add, with the new sheriff in town, this is gonna open the door for us to have, um, some meaningful conversation, of which I've had some already, to relook at this, because we should have resource officers in all the schools.
Exactly.
And it should be fair and equitable.
It's good time of year to be doing it.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, uh, okay. Uh, motion carries. Item number twenty.
Thank you, Mayor, Members of the Board. Uh, item number twenty is a resolution accepting the two, uh, two thousand and eighteen Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant. Uh, this is a grant that we oftentimes apply for. Uh, eleven thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars is the amount of the grant that we will receive. Uh, the grant funds will be shared with Craven County Sheriff's Offices, uh, and utilized to procure equipment and materials for personnel workstations at the Narcotics Enforcement Team's facility.
Okay.
Happy to answer any questions.
Board have questions?
Make a motion that we consider adopting a resolution accepting the two thousand and eighteen Edward Byrne Moral Justice Assistance Grant.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Aster, seconded by Alderman Bingle. Is there further discussion? See, now let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Aster?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number twenty-one.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, item number twenty-one is associated with what you just approved, which is the budget ordinance amendment, uh, for the grant fund, uh, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen grant fund. Uh, this, uh, acknowledges the receipt of these grant funds and establishes a necessary budget.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt the budget ordinance amendment for the FYI two thousand and eighteen, nineteen grant fund.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Aster, seconded by Alderman Bingle. Is there further discussion? See, now let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Aster?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Let's go to a form, Mrs. Bingle.
I have none.
Second, Mr. Aster.
None.
Mr. Kenzie?
Yes, sir, I have one appointment tonight and shout to the Board of Adjustment.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I want to favor the motion, say aye. Uh, I oppose the same. Motion carries. Do you have more?
No, sir, I do not.
Alderman Best?
Yes, I do, Mayor. Um, I have a chance to reach out and to Mr. Jim Morrison. Um, he's been a resident of New Bern since two thousand and four, and he is well qualified for this, um, position on the board. And he, um, he sincerely had a great interest in serving on this board. So if the, um, board would, um, approve Mr. Jim Morrison's appointment to the, uh, Board of Adjustment.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? I want to favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Mr. Odom?
No, sir.
It's time the attorneys report.
That's important, right, Mayor?
City manager's report.
Um, I have two items. Um, and Mayor, uh, I don't know if you want me to do it or if you want to do it.
Yeah, you want to do it.
Uh, but, um, uh, just wanted to update the board on, uh, the mayor. And, uh, we went to DC, uh, not too long ago to meet with, uh, various agencies along with the city of Wilmington's mayor, uh, Saffo, uh, their legislative liaison, Tony McEwen. Uh, we also, um, had, uh, with us, uh, the assistant county manager for Pender County, the mayor of Surf City, uh, and Wilmington's, uh, Housing Authority Director. Um, I think that captures all of us. Uh, we, we, uh, had a very jam-packed two days, uh, of meetings. We met with, uh, representatives from FEMA, both on the individual and the, uh, public assistance side, um, and, and others that were there. Uh, we met with, uh, HUD, um, the Assistant Secretary, uh, Ratcliffe with HUD. Uh, Secretary Carson did stop in, uh, and, and offer his support of, of New Bern and Wilmington and some of the things that we're going through down here. And, and, um, we discussed a lot of the issues we're having with, uh, Trent Court displaced residents, also, uh, with the fact that, uh, we're looking to try to, um, to expedite, uh, the, that project as, as quickly as possible. We've, we've made them aware of, of what you just approved tonight with the sale of the Carolina Avenue, uh, project. So we, uh, also met with the, uh, U.S. Department of Transportation regarding transportation issues that we're seeing around in eastern North Carolina. As you are aware, during the hurricane, most of our major arterial roads into, uh, Wilmington into New Bern, uh, all of them were impacted seventeen, seventy, forty, uh, ninety-five in some areas. So most of our major, uh, major highways were impacted and impassable, basically cutting us off from supply that we may need, or whatever. We, we asked them to really look at these matters and, and, and to, to take a look at some of the flooding issues that we're seeing on some of those interstates. Uh, we met with the, uh, U.S. Department of Education. Uh, Secretary DeBosse came in, uh, for a few minutes. We met with her, uh, uh, assistant secretaries, uh, as well, and various, uh, people with the agency regarding some of the issues with, with school, uh, schools that we're having here in eastern North Carolina, especially, uh, the, the downtime, uh, of those schools during hurricane-type situations, uh, due to the, the lack of generators, the lack of, um, um, you know, those generators lead to mold growth within the schools because of the lack of moving air, um, oftentimes exacerbating the cost of mitigation, especially mold, uh, issues. Uh, we have, as you know, some of our elementarys, uh, that serve as shelters here, uh, that do not have generators. Uh, that's some of the issues that we're seeing around here. So we, we wanted to express those concerns with them. We also talked about mobile classrooms or the ability for them to try to get the kids back to school as quickly as possible. Um, and, and I will say, Pender County, uh, who was with us, the assistant county manager, I, I think their schools had just gotten back right whenever we got there. So that, they had been out of school for a month. Uh, and, and that's, that's, that's a, that's a tough loss, uh, towards the kids' education. And there's gotta be ways in which we can mitigate that. Um, we met with, um, White House staff, um, um, Rear Admiral, uh, with the White House. Uh, we, we met with him and a couple of his, his staffers, uh, to discuss the issues that we have. Um, they are well aware of, of New Bern's needs, all of these different agencies. I think it is very beneficial for us, and we have, we've definitely, uh, kind of honed their ear in on New Bern and some of the issues that we're having. Uh, Senator Burr and Senator Tillis's office, uh, uh, they, their legislative assistants were all, uh, in attendance with most of every one of these meetings that we had. Um, we also went to the Pew Charitable Trust where we got to meet with, uh, uh, some representatives with the Pew Charitable Trust who looked at some of these major issues and, and, and through analytical research and data, they actually, uh, tried to assist in, in federal programs and, uh, legislation that can help with resiliency and recovery from these types of, of, of events. I think, Mayor, you had a meeting with the, uh, one hundred resilient cities representatives, uh, about, uh, some of the things that, that, that can be potentially implemented with regards to building materials and, and standards and, and things like that. But, um, I don't know if you want to add anything else, Mayor, but we had an extremely jam-packed rush from one meeting to the next. Uh, but, uh, we, we, we covered a lot of ground in a very short amount of time.
Yeah, the only thing I, I think I would add to, we, we want to make sure that we, um, found accountability in the funding source, that some of the hurricanes, Katrina, Matthew, we're, we do not, it's not acceptable, the length of time, uh, that some of the funding has flowed through. So we, we have identified from, from the president down to the mayor and the board of aldermen, um, accountability that if, if, if there's any lack of flow of funding in an expeditious manner, and I think I'm very concerned that, as I've said before, and I will say publicly, if there, if there is one, I think, I think it's in a five-mile radius of, of the center of Raleigh. I don't think it's on our level. I don't think it's from my, our meetings. Uh, I don't think it's on the federal level. I think the federal government will fund it, and the money comes to the state. And from there, it's a matter of, um, uh, of whether or not the, the checks come in from, uh, up in Raleigh. Um, so I, I also found in some of the meetings that there were overlapping concerns of the, of DOT with HUD and FEMA and education, that, that some of the things that affected, uh, there's, there's absolutely unacceptable kids being out of school over thirty days, you know, coming. Um, so the mid, the, the hotspots we talked about, mobile hotspots we talked about, uh, on regional level, southeast, northeast areas of the United States, having those eighteen-wheelers with those generators to get electricity to those schools so that air does flow, so that we don't have air quality problems. So, um, it, it was a very good, uh, meeting. Uh, I think that, again, uh, we tried to go up there and give Washington the concerns that we're hearing out in public. And, and on the one hand, we are trying to meet more quality conditions here in, in the state of North Carolina. On the other hand, when we have events like an, or your flood, uh, storm surge, hurricane, uh, those things certainly impede the opportunity to get the water back out to the river. And so there's quite a few issues there. Uh, the, the, the big one, I think, i- is really of concern. And we brought back a, a piece of paper that the defense uses. Um, you guys all know that there's not, will be a, a base building where there's not a flow of traffic of, um, and, and the Interstate Forty, there's about twelve miles of Interstate Forty that flood. There's areas of seventy that flood. There's areas of seventy that flood. And we really expressed our concern that more so Wilmington was totally, you know, cut off of Forty. And so here we are trying to get this, I mean, it's kind of bad when you gotta depend on a, on a helicopter to get your supplies in. So, uh, it was a good meeting. I think we, we, we all left with the idea that, um, this doesn't have to be the last trip to DC. If we need a third one, we'll do it. And again, I'll, I'll just go on a new business. I'll, I'll just end it with this, that, um, we brought a lot of information home. We've got quite a lot of it here, if anybody wants any of it. But, um, we have to continue to communicate to the public. We have to continue to communicate to the public what's going on. That just because osmosis has set in that maybe the board has, has dealt with, um, government, be it the county or the state or the federal government, that we're getting a little bit, but obviously, a lot of citizens do not know. And we have to continue to facilitate the discussion, both on Facebook and, um, on our PEG channel. Uh, we have to partner with the public to get the information out there. And so I'm sure we'll probably talk about that on a new business.
Oh, yeah.
So having said it, did you have anything else under your report?
It, it, that's actually a great segue for my second item that I had, Mayor. Um, we, um, are, we have been notified by, uh, FEMA that there are two major deadlines that are coming up. And with regards to communicating to the public, um, December the seventh, and this is for all of y'all to kind of remember and write down and pass along to your constituents, December the seventh is the deadline for the hazard mitigation grant funds for buyouts. What we are looking to do as staff is to come to our business meeting on the twenty-seventh and discuss all of the different options that we're providing to the public. We want to get this information out to the public, but we're gonna need your help in facilitating getting that information out to the citizens and the public as well. Um, what we're gonna do is, we're actually probably gonna set up a survey, uh, to where that survey can, uh, citizens can, can fill out that survey as to whether they're interested in mitigating as in elevation, or whether they're interested in mitigating as in a buyout. Okay? We need to know those particular properties because those properties need to be, be accumulated, and then we as a city have to submit those properties to the county, and the county submits it on up to the state level. I think that's basically, Alderman Aster, if you remember during the Irene Process, that's kind of how it happened. Now, uh, we want the citizens to understand that, that, that process, um, you know, just because you submit it doesn't mean you're gonna get it. Um, they actually do this process, uh, uh, through, you know, repetitive loss, substantial damage, all these different scoring criteria that has to be met in order for someone to qualify for that. Um...
Mark, do you, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Who advises them that they should do this? I mean, they just think to themselves that, hey, I want to be bought out, or I want to raise my home, or is there somewhere they can call first or somewhere? And I know we'll talk about that maybe later, but I...
It's, that's, that's a great question, but ultimately, it's their decision. It's their home, it's their private property, it's their personal property.
So nobody's requiring them to do that?
It, it's not, it's not a requirement.
Okay.
Um, and, and to be honest with you, it, it's not even a requirement for you as the board to pass it on to the county or the state government, because there are negative things that can happen as you pass those along. You go and you tear down a home, and that person moves away, you've lost a taxpaying citizen, you've lost a property that had tax value. Now you have a green lot that is deep restricted that can't be developed on. So there's all kinds of different things here that you've got to think about that, uh, uh, are gonna be tough decisions coming up. And we have some deadlines. One is in December, December the seventh. The other is coming up in January. It is our intent, uh, Mr. Ruggieri, and I don't know if you have anything you want to add, but it is our intent to come the, uh, on November the, the twenty-seventh with all of this process, but I want to go ahead and announce it now so everybody can start getting the word out about this very short window that we've been notified on to get this information to the county, ultimately to the state level. Um, and, um... Yeah, we, we also have a FEMA rep that is coming to brief the board and, and speak to you during your business meeting regarding these two deadline dates, uh, that will be here on the twenty-seventh. So we've, we've got that lined up. They will be here. They've confirmed. Uh, so, uh, but once again, from the twenty-seventh to December the seventh is a very short window for us to get all of that accumulated, and that's gonna be the time in which they need to have this information filled out. This, you want, I miss, I think Jeff may have something.
Um, just, I guess, to, um, kind of emphasize where we're at, um, and that we have such a, a small window to work with, and we were just notified this at the end of last week. So it's, we have been sitting on this data. Um, and that we need your help when you're out in the community talking to people. All we essentially need is a list, is the person's name, their address, and their telephone number. And we can take it from there. We will be inputting all the data into the FEMA program that, as Mark was saying, kind of ranks, um, each property based on, you know, the, the highest ranking is if someone is displaced, their home has been, um, damaged beyond repair, they've been told they can't live in it, and they're somewhere else. That's the highest rank. And then from there, it just goes down and talks about repetitive loss and other, uh, and damage and things like that. But that's all we need. So we've accumulated over a hundred addresses already just from taking phone calls and talking to people that would be interested in the buyout program or elevation. Uh, so if you can get out there, when you're in your, when you're in the community and speaking with, uh, with citizens, if they're interested, you can give them to me, give them my phone number, two five two six three nine seven five eight seven. Send me an email. All I need is a name and address and a phone number and what they're interested in.
Jeff?
Buyout, elevation, both.
Right. Is it just possible for you to put that in a paragraph?
Sure.
What you just said?
Yeah.
And make it concise that we all have the exact same information, and then it's a matter, we can copy and paste, but we could shoot it out, but at least we're seeing it from the same page.
Sure.
And it's difficult sometimes. There's so much information.
Absolutely.
If we had something, we could share it.
We just, we just found this out late last week, like literally, we just discussed it Friday before the close of business on Friday on how we need to go forward with doing this.
Yeah.
We are planning to, we wanted to brief y'all tonight. We were off on Monday. We want to put together a, a, a package that is going to help you facilitate this message. Number one, to help pass the message. Number two, with the survey or the information, the email, phone call, however they want to do it, we're... email, phone call, however they want to do it, we're going to provide all of that information, and then try to make it as seamless and easy as possible for these people. Some people have already been proactive, we got a petition from a lot of people that live over in the North Hills Drive area tonight, that has exactly what we need, their name, their address, and their phone number. So now, what that allows us to do is to reach out to these individuals, and have a conversation with them about whether they're interested in mitigation as far as buyout, or whether they're interested in elevations, whatever they're interested in, at that point, we've got some decisions. And then ultimately, this board has a decision too, as to whether or not you want to pass on every single one of these, you could have five hundred houses that couldn't, I mean, if that's the case, you know, we may not get five hundred approved, you may get fifty approved, but it's all going to be based on their criteria of repetitive loss, substantial damage, everything else.
All right, oh, can you answer?
Jeff or Mark, could you answer, we, we received some information that if a house makes it through the process, and they're approved to get bought out, that seventy-five percent of that funding comes from FEMA, and the balance of the twenty-five percent either comes from the state, the county, or the city. Do we know in past situations if the state has actually picked up that twenty-five percent, or if the city or county?
The, the states pick up the twenty-five percent on each day. I know during Irene, Craven County submitted a hundred addresses.
Yeah.
And only six were bought out, and none were raised, so it's, it's not, there's not a tremendous amount of, of, of money there to, to do it with, so it's-
But that, but, but to, to that point, it's very important for us to accumulate those, because then the state can see the, the, the dire need of the area, and then at that point, it may help facilitate more money to come to us.
Sure.
Irene was a seven and a half, this one's a ten and a half, so I could figure the scale of this is going to be much larger, and the interest is going to be much larger, so we've got to see, and, and hopefully, and definitely don't want to give any people false hope, because there is a very strict criteria that they go by, and it is funding, you know, it's funding dependent, and that funding dependent nature is depending on what we get, and we only get a percentage of that, Mayor, I think you've mentioned that before.
Yeah.
You know-
Well, I mean, the whole state, the hundred percent, eighty, eighty percent has to stay within the county's effect in the most, and so, you know, basically, somebody up in the mountains could, that twenty percent could be getting some funding, but of the eighty, it's important that, that as much as we attempt to get it, it's going to depend on, you know, if you take that, if it's a hundred million, hundred million dollar, whatever it is, it's fifteen percent.
Right.
I mean, I'm talking about for the city level, but on the state level, if it's a, last I heard, it was a forty-three billion dollar event between South Carolina, Oklahoma and Virginia, but I'm sure it's going to be much higher, so if it's a hundred billion, then it would be fifteen percent of that, times eighty percent divided by a hundred counties, and however, whoever proactively is going for money.
Right, and that's the reason why we want to try to be as proactive.
All the best, Jeff, something?
Yeah, I, I do have something. I know that it's been said repeatedly, you know, about the loss of tax base that we'll be losing, and, and I understand that, because I know the city has, have a tax base running the city, but also, that when I have my constituents reaching out to me and saying that they are tired of their homes being, this is the second and third time that their home is being flooded, and we as a city have to act on that, because I would not want to be in that situation if I was one of those residents, so, and, and this petition right here, this is from the North Hills Drive area, the residents over there have already, they were working diligently, because they are tired of, of, of the flooding problem, so they already have their petition here, gave it to the city clerk today, and they're ready for a buyout, and I have stressed to them that this is a case-by-case basis, so don't get your hopes up, I'm just being transparent with you, don't get your hopes up, because you may not be approved, it's, it's a lot of criteria that has to be met, so my people are aware of that over in the North Hills Drive area, but-
And it's certainly not our decision, that we, we want to be the facilitator for the, for our citizens to try to get them the help they need, but we are definitely not the decision maker in that.
And, and I just want to get this process started quickly, and I know, Mark, y'all have been working tirelessly and diligently, and I thank all of you, but I just want to get all this information compiled, Jeff, you as well, get all of this information compiled so that we can have this information and submit it to the county, so when FEMA do say, yes, we have funds available, we already have our information to the county, this is a golden opportunity, the window of opportunities opened up for our city, so I, I think we need to, to work hard, and this December seventh date, I mean, that's just a little too close for, as I'm concerned, but that's the state and FEMA, so, but that's all I have to say, I, I feel that everybody's working hard on this, I appreciate it, and let's continue to work together and do what we have to do, and hopefully, that we won't, when some of those homes are bought out, hopefully those residents won't leave our city, maybe they'll go someplace else in our city, so let's, you know, push that to, you know, to them, thank you.
Can, can we do some press releases? I mean, we really do need to make sure that everyone that's interested knows about this.
We will run the full gamut, I know Colleen's probably in there listening right now, but we will do the social media, the press releases, the, I mean, you know, the, our website, anything that we can, I mean, even, even if, if you want to go door to door, we'll print out handouts for people, if you, if you know affected neighborhoods, we're, we're more than happy to do that.
Yeah, we, we also probably should look at this, this journal or something like that, to do some, an article in it as well.
Anything else?
Just a one, one clarification, in the past, that we have funneled our information through the county, but this time, we'll be doing it, we'll be inputting the data directly into the FEMA database.
That's great.
Because they're overwhelmed.
Okay. But I thought, I thought the procedure was that we, the city, had to submit it to the county.
They are delegating that responsibility to us.
Oh, okay.
It's still going to be submitted by the county, we're just doing the input.
Correct.
Okay.
We're helping them out.
Great.
Anything else, sir?
No, sir.
Okay, thanks, you got anything?
Yes, sir.
Let's go to, let's go to new business, I'm going to go over there.
And then you were going to start with me? And, you know, I always have a laundry list. I'd like to propose, Mark, that in January, we try to have a joint meeting with the county commissioners, so I'd like to start working on that, and put some topics together, so that we can come together and start working together, they're going to be sworn in, there's only one meeting in December, it's a busy time, so I'd like to go ahead, I'd like to go ahead and, and start the process, not only because of flood and other related issues we need to work with them on, but other things in the city and county we can work together, so let's go ahead and try to get that on the calendar, give them notice, and hopefully, you all agree with me that this is an important thing that we really need to do, it'll be a public meeting, we understand that, I don't care where we go, but we need to have topics in its agenda, and we need to do this.
Okay.
The next thing I want to talk about is, earlier this evening at four o'clock, or this afternoon, myself, Alderman Astor, and Mayor met with a group called CARE, I forgot what it stands, Citizens About Flood Relief, or I'm not sure exactly what CARE stands for, but there was probably about maybe fifteen to eighteen people in the room, and diverse group of people talking about their flooding issues, and what's going on, and the need for information. The thing I took away from that meeting is, they need, they need help, they want somebody to talk to, they're talking to us, and we're just the facilitators, and I really, what I took away from that is, I think we need a department, we, we're going to have to have a, a division, a department of flood management, resiliency, whatever, I don't know, Mayor, maybe you can-
Well, I-
And I know, I, I think the time is now, we've got to do something, just, you know, we need to have more stuff on the TV, we need, you know, they'd like to see us do something on Channel Three, they want a roadmap, a strategic plan, they want a resource person.
Flood certification.
Yeah, the flood certification is an issue, they, they brought up a lot of issues that they're having in trying to get the information, and trying to determine what their next steps are, and I think it's imperative upon us that we do something about it, they're looking to us.
One of the other things they suggested, that if we would start having something on our PEG channel concerning information on the hurricane, is if we do that at one time during the week, like at four-thirty on Friday afternoon, they know that they can tune in and listen to whatever information that we may be passing on to them, and I thought that was an excellent idea, it's kind of hit and miss when they tune in now, but if they, if there was one dedicated time. The other thing is, is that they need someone where they can pick up telephone, call and say, I got this problem, and we need to be able to direct them to either the department head, or to the FEMA staff, or to a state person, or, but right now, these people that we-
Or get them the answer, the one issue was with the flood elevation, some woman had to hire a surveyor twice, because she got two different answers, it may be that we've got to do a seminar on, you know, educating the surveyors, we may need to do something on educating builders or contractors, because they're coming in, tell somebody, oh, yeah, you got to raise your house, no doubt, you got to raise your house, and they may not have to raise their house, per our standards, and I'm confused-
How far do they raise it?
Yeah, I mean, I'm confused, is, can everybody here quote unequivocally what our base flood elevation is, and where our free board is, can you, because earlier today, the mayor and I were in the room, and we all, there were four different answers, so none of us had, had the right answer, so it's really difficult when people are looking to us for answers, and as I told the citizens today, you know, I've never heard of flood mitigation before this, and we're having to educate ourselves and learn about this, it's really difficult, so I feel that we really need to talk about this, have a work session, something, but our citizens are expecting more from us than what they're currently getting, and just, you know, calling, you know, the suggestion was, we'll call to Development Services, and they can help you, well, they don't know that they're supposed to call to Development Service, they're talking about having something on the very front page, you know, of our, where we do have it, but continue to put that message out there, and give them more information, and all neighborhoods, and, and we're finding that the poorest or the poor neighborhoods get zero information.
Right, you got to go door to door and-
And so if that's the case, then we need to put that plan in place to make that happen, so that's my suggestion, I don't know how anybody else feels, but that's what I took away from this meeting tonight, they felt very strongly about it, and a lot of frustration, and Alderman Best, I know you hear the same from your constituency, because our two wards got hit probably as badly.
I think until we, you know, I think we're going to meet with that group again, and I think it was a good meeting, I think you should look into, for a ninety, ninety day period, hiring somebody to be the clearinghouse czar for any questions concerning anything how to do this hurricane, and that gives us a little time to look long term what we're going to do, because we are going to be doing, we're doing a lot already, but there are other things that we need to do from long-term strategy standpoint.
Wasn't there a group created, I'm waiting for Antoinette to text me back, because she's now the actual director of it, I believe?
Well, there's the Craven County Disaster Relief Alliance.
Yes, so what it's, that's what she is.
So that, that's basically a group that's come together, that's talking about emotional support, building support, people that can provide free services, it is a clearinghouse, but again, our citizens are asking us about, what's the elevation, what am I supposed to know, do I rebuild, do I raise my house, is the city going to come in and tell me, after I've hired a contractor, no, you did it all wrong, now tear it out, you know, if you lived in the Stark district? They had really good questions, and I, I think we need to look at that. My question is, if we hired a quote-unquote consultant, or a flood consultant for ninety days, would that be reimbursable under FEMA?
Nope.
No.
Community development, yeah, budget line item.
I was just curious.
Well, and the consultant that we have currently employed has a very large IA division, they are IA experts, and they are flood mitigation experts as well, so it might be that we need to talk to them a little bit to see.
Span the role.
Is that within their scope of their contract?
No.
Okay.
Not current contract, anyway.
Right, I don't think it's going to be, I think they're more on the macro level, and I think we're looking for a micro type of case-by-case person to help facilitate the discussion and get them to the right department with whatever's going on.
There's so much going on right now.
So, let's say, okay, I'm going to give you a hypothetical, a call comes in, six, to City Hall, the call is, is routed to Development Services, and Development Services is doing their job, but in a particular scenario, it might get sent over to another department, and then that department says, well, you need to talk to this department, and then that department says, well, that's actually a county thing, you need to talk to the county, and then the county says, well, you need to talk to FEMA, now, what you need is, is somebody that can just kind of walk that citizen through the process, and then, like I said earlier about Mark and I going to DC, we want to make sure we know from New York, Oklahoma, to Washington DC, if there's going to be a snag in that funding, we want to be able to figure out where it is, so we can correct the problem, and I think that I, I would, I would try on trial basis and fund it through, if JR, this is acceptable, the, the community development line item, yeah, well, do a budget payment.
That's a yes, right?
No, that was, that was one of them.
We have to see. We have, we have to look at all the details and see if it-
Well, that's important, you can find, it can be found in there.
I don't know where this gets put, it needs to be sooner rather than later, I'm not asking for any action this evening, but can we have another meeting, can we do a work session, can we do something, can everybody think about this, can we get some more information? I just, you know, the, the citizens expect some, some information, better service.
We could spend fifteen thousand dollars over the next nine days, and it could be the best fifteen thousand we ever spent, and it could be wired up and thrown in the trash can, it depends on the person that you're going to get to do it, I think.
And it's, it's going to take a special person to understand.
I think that special person is out there.
Also too, I'm going to meet, Margaret Shields has identified some grant money, if, would it be okay to talk with her, and it would pay for a consultant, I don't, I don't know what the parameters are or anything, she just reached out to me and said that one of the funds that she works with are, are willing to grant funds for consultants for areas.
I can just speak for myself, I'm thirty days behind on, on doing something about this issue we're talking about.
I agree.
And I, I would encourage the board to do something about it, I'm, I'm just speaking for me, I'm, I'm behind the ball on this one.
Maybe we should reach out to Andy and see if he's got someone that, that he can identify, that's an expert in the area that would be willing to help us out or something.
Who's Andy?
Andy Ennis. I mean, they may have someone that's recently retired or something.
If, if we took on Ms. Bengals' idea in regards to having staff, could it be on a contract basis, meaning, you know, maybe we can-
It would be affordable, it would be kind of-
Well, I'm saying, okay, not a consultant necessarily, but I'm-
A consultant would be on a contract.
But it would be more than one person, you're saying?
This is a special assignment, individual.
For, for, but more than, like, you know, like a team, that's what I took for it, um, would it be on a temporary basis in regards to, once it's, you know what I'm saying, you're, it's funded, and then they're working it out, and then when it's no longer leading-
I think if the board, if we do not get any grip on this subject matter, I, I don't want to see twenty different know-it-all consultants coming in this city-
I don't either.
Trying to, everybody knows how to do it, and it's going to just create more confusion than is already out there, and I'm sure all twenty of them would be experts in their field, but I already know a couple that probably think the other one doesn't have any business in New York, Oklahoma, that they got no handle. Alderman Best, wait, go ahead.
Well, has anyone checked, or do the county already have such procedures in, in place, that, you know, for is a list of one from A to Z that they go by when they have their taxpayer citizens call in, in times of hurricanes, or whatever?
Well, one thing we were trying to do up in DC, which again, these things don't happen overnight, is, is get some community development disaster relief funding, you know, that, that would be in addition to our normal community block money, because that money is available, but again, we, we just can't sit around and wait for funding.
No, I understand the funding part, I'm talking about for is the procedures, like when someone calls into the city, now, what steps, you know, do we give to that person, who they need to contact, whatever, so I didn't know if the county has a, a-
I, I don't mean this about-
I don't think they do.
You know?
This is what-
They feel like they- They feel like you're getting run around.
Today, they provided three questions to us. One was providing leadership. How do you see working together with the community on the recovery effort and planning to be a more resilient community and region for future floods? Specifically, is the city working on a plan for recovery in long term? Can't answer that. We need to be, but I can't answer that. Second was, where do you see the city's actions going on flood protection issues such as base flood elevation, participation in the community rating system, CRS, which I learned today that we are not a member of, and assisting homeowners to adapt their homes to a new normal of periodic flooding? Again, these are the questions people are asking that they wanna talk to somebody about. How can we put in place an effective two-way system or forum for regular communication between citizens and the city on recovery and resiliency plans? So, these are, I think they're well thought out, good questions.
Are we, maybe we create a couple of town halls and invite some of the people that are already here to answer these questions? I mean, we do-
And then play it on the TV or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, this is obviously the easiest location, but I'm trying to think of other locations that we own, but besides development services where people are able to get up to the steps. But I mean, if we have the resources, I know the FEMA woman and some of them are still around for a certain time. Maybe we can do a town hall and people can come and ask questions in, in that format until we can really solidify what we need to do. But I agree with the mayor, you know, we're thirty days behind what we need to do, but we really need to knock, kick the can and kind of figure out what we're gonna do. Do we need to have an ad hoc group? You said no?
Mayor, what do you wanna do?
I would, I would urge the board to hire a facilitator of communication, a special assignment person for a ninety day period to, to any calls that come in. I'm not so sure we all not have a designated line, flood question line. Now, it's not that we have the miracle of answers to all these, but we, we are going to help get the citizens the answers they need. And if they get to run around with them, please, we're gonna, we're gonna figure out if, if it was justifiably not something that department handled and that, and that it gets to the right department. All these are case by case situations, so you can't-
We do need a program. They were talking about Dr. Gavin Smith, who's like the expert at the mitigation center at UNC Chapel Hill, bringing in people like that, they're willing to do pro bono, to do programs to assist the citizens in learning more. There was a gentleman who contacted Morgan and me about he's, he specializes in historic district flooding issues. He's willing to come in. I think he wants to come December twelfth. But it's just pulling these things and he does that pro bono too. He comes into communities. We'd have to put it together, get the word out. Our staff members and other people should be there. But I, we just, we need direction. People, Alderman asked, did you feel the frustra-, I felt the frustration of-
Well, I mean, I, I do feel the frustration and especially when they tell me they hired a surveyor and the surveyor did not do the correct procedures and they had to hire another surveyor and now they're out two thousand dollars and trying to get an elevation certificate. And I, I don't know what the difference between one and the other is, but we need to find out or, you know, try to educate the surveyors.
Yeah, not to continue that, but that just popped in my head based on this. If we do figure out what we're gonna do in regards to the recovery efforts, because this is something that's ongoing, is there a possibility by city law, I'm asking you, where we can create some sort of policy or procedure where if we have these situations that, you know, like daycares, they have to be certified and they go on this list and they're kind of like, "These are good daycares." So, if these individuals go through whatever training and they show proof that they understand flood mitigation, they're, this is the only specific list that as a city, we recommend prices or whatever they are, but we recommend and we have that for each department in regards to hurricane when it comes to, you know, like roofing, mitigation, all of the stuff that happens. Because people have, I've seen-
Not everybody's licensed.
Yeah, you know, and not everybody's licensed, bonded, people have been getting ripped off. I mean, is there any way to, to be able to implement that as a city?
Well, I mean, that's a kind of police action through the attorney general's office or something. Or the occupation board, the general contractors board, or it's a surveying problem. There's, there's an occupation board for surveyors. I mean, we can't, we can't, we can't kind of like usurp the occupation boards and things. We can, we can complain to them.
I wasn't saying that. I'm saying for us to be able to create some sort of list that we, as a city, certify because maybe they wouldn't do this training.
We can't show any-.
Okay, never mind. I'll take that back. I'm just trying to think because, I mean, this is something, you know, God forbid, we're gonna continue to have hurricanes. There's gonna be damage and this is, this stuff happens. I mean, we need to be prepared for it and this was a, you know, a catastrophic one and I just feel like, based on this.
Let's stop there a sec. Mr. Steens, what did you hear this board just say? Or what, fifteen minutes of discussion, what, what, could you summarize what, what we, where we are?
If I had to summarize, it sounds like everybody has concerns about what this group is talking about. What I think my recommendation is, is let me sit down with Mr. Ruggeri. Let us think through, cause, I mean, we just met with them earlier. Let us digest, let me brief him on what was discussed and everything else. I think you're dealing with two different things. You're dealing with future resiliency, what should we do, plans, how we're gonna do ten, twenty, fifty years down the road. And you're dealing with people who have issues right now that they need somebody to call to try to get an answer. And I think if, if it's, instead of having the, the phone book of all the city numbers that has fifty numbers listed to it, maybe we just put something out there that says, "One eight hundred, call the city," or whatever it is, and they call the city and the person that answers that phone call and they're gonna try to help facilitate answering their questions or getting them in touch with the right person that they need to, to help them through this process of recovery. The other part of it, the, the big long-term thing is where I think this board needs to, to have some discussion about how they want to move forward with this community as a city. And, you know, floodways, base flood elevation plus free board. What do you wanna do about, you know, flood mitigation strategies? Do we wanna, you know, do we wanna cut off some areas and use pumps to help, you know, get water out of certain areas? Do we wanna get the Army Corps of Engineers, Mayor? And I know maybe they, some of the things were discussed with us in DC was about the Army Corps of Engineers coming in doing a study. Do we need to get them to come in to look at some studies? I think those are big, long-term, it's gonna take a while to get there kind of things. I, I don't think you'll get a whole lot of calls from people of, of, "I wanna sit down on the Army Corps of Engineers" discussion of, of blah, 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 blah. That's, they're looking for us, I think, for that leadership of what are we doing to, to help prepare our city for the future with regards to what could potentially be the norm now of floods and impacts of storms. I, I think the other part, the frustration part of it is, I'm currently displaced and I'm trying to figure out how to get back in my house and build it correctly so that I'm not gonna be slapped on the wrist or I'm not gonna have whatever happen to me. I, I think we're two completely different situations. And if that's establishing a number, then so be it. And maybe it, we, we, maybe we, we get somebody temporarily to house that for ninety days like you're talking about, Mayor. But this big long-term thing, I, I think that's, that, that's something that we're gonna have to sit down and develop some strategies on what we wanna do long-term. That's kind of what I'm-
I think I mentioned this to some of the Alderman already, that during the discussion of Trent Court, primarily at FEMA. If I heard once, I heard three or four times, where is the Army Corps of Engineers studying on this? And that was new to me. And-
Who is responsible for that? Is it the, is it the property owner? Is it the city? That's where I would be confused on that, if I heard that.
I don't know. I just kept hearing it and it kind of made a little sense that the Army Corps, I guess, is the, is the arbiter of decisions for, for government. It's the commonality of, of these different departments that the Army Corps is the arbiter of these decisions that I, I, I didn't get any specifics, but it kind of sounded me like that. If the Army Corps of Engineers looks at Trent Court and says, "Take it down, demolish it," or whatever, or "Don't demolish it, build a seawall up," whatever the senators up there and the staff and the bureaucrats gonna do is gonna depend on that Army Corps of Engineers, uh, Corps.
So, how come, what does it take to engage them?
And so, don't, don't expect to get anything done about Trent Court. And from what I've heard, do you get Army Corps of Engineers to look at it?
So, again, I'm asking, what does it take to engage them?
I, I think it's basically a phone call with the Army Corps to determine, you know, what their process is. Do I know?
Because I don't have time to talk about it now, but that's another situation we have to address.
See, this is what citizens are dealing with.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, I'm frustrated that I heard, you know, and I thought we were, since the hurricane, we were gonna really jump on this thing and expedite this resolve to, to Trent Court. And now, I looked there, I'm just like a citizen out here trying to figure out how to fix your house. I heard something new.
And we still have people-
You were not gonna get anything done without an Army Corps of Engineers, so. Somebody needs to be talking to Army Corps of Engineers and they're probably gonna tell you-
I don't know what you're talking about, but you better find out. Somebody better find out why those people up there were making those statements. You, you, you heard it.
Farber, you're aware the shelter closed on Friday?
I was there on Saturday.
I wasn't here, so I just found out, so I think that's crazy news. I was really a little bit upset with that because no one notified me.
Yeah, I, I did not get the notification like we got before. I was aware of it, I not even started yesterday, on the day off and was told that they have placed, there were fifty people left in the shelter and all of them were placed.
The problem is, funding this position for ninety days is it's not somebody that's gonna sit there and the phone ring five times during the day and that's all they're gonna do if it's a slow day. They're gonna go out and meet with, with church groups, civic groups.
Neighborhoods, with neighborhoods.
If they, if they carry a cellphone, if they get a call, they can stop and take care of that call. But there, it's just not somebody that's gonna sit at a desk and wait for a phone call. They're gonna go out and actively educate, that would be my thought.
Well, I can agree with that.
Mr. Mayor, based on what the mayor just asked you and what you said is gonna do with Mr. Ruggeri, you're gonna start that process first thing tomorrow morning to activate that, to, to see exactly what can actually be done based on what everyone is going through and what you just said tonight? So, how long do you think that process will take? Twenty-four hours, seventy-two hours?
I'd love to say twenty-four hours, but, but that, that's probably not realistic. But we would definitely ju- jump on it as quickly as we can. I think establishing a line, a phone number, that's as easy as talking to our IT department. I think we've got a bank of phone numbers that we could probably have established and we could probably set up that phone number as quickly as possible.
And then you get that with the board and let us know exactly the process that you have developed based on what you've learned when you went to DC?
Yes, and, and the ninety day contract part of it, if we decide to go with an employee type situation where you've got that, that's gonna take a little longer. But, but yes, I'm, I'm happy to help do whatever the board, as a board, chooses to do.
Well, I mean, I don't think the board will skip the HR bits, but I'm ready to take a half day off with a couple, I'm gonna go find somebody to do this job. I mean, I don't, I don't wanna wait thirty days to hire somebody. I wanna go find somebody. I've got, get a retired home inspector or somebody, go ahead and do this. Okay, we're still under mid-business with Alderman Bing-
Yeah, I'm sorry. It really went off on the track. The only thing I've got to say is Merry Merry Christmas.
During mid-business, but-
Yeah, Merry Merry Christmas is coming up, the big weekend. So, day after Thanksgiving will be light of the season. Of course, the city, the lighting of the community Christmas tree will take place at Union Point this year. We're really excited because thanks to Yup and some supporters, we're gonna have free sledding there and lots of food and games for the kids. It's gonna be a great, great event and lots of room for a lot of people to come. And then I do wanna wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. I am thankful for our city. I'm thankful for our responders and all the people that just, you know, were there for everybody as they needed. And I just, my prayer is going to be that we continue to get the help and support we need for those who won't be so happy this holiday season. Thank you.
Yes, the only mid-business I have is this Friday, between six and eight, young urban professionals will be at the Omega Center. But it will be open from two to eight, where closed distribution. So, if you know anyone that is still needing clothes, the Omega Center will be open. But from six to eight, we will be receiving applications for any families that have been affected by the hurricane. We are doing turkey box dinners. So far, we've had committed a hundred and twenty turkey boxes from different people in the community that are supporting us. So, if you know anyone in need, it is first come, first served. So, if you do not come to Omega Center, Eight Twenty-two Cedar Street, between six and eight PM this Friday, it's, you will not have an application and you would have to be able to pick up your box on Tuesday, the twentieth, or we will hopefully set up a ride with Toyota of New Bern to deliver it to you. But that's what we have going on and that's all I have. I did go. And I am working on a presentation that I will be presenting to the board on something that I would like to do. So, when I bring that, I will let you guys know.
You're gonna give us a flow report on your trip to LA?
That's what, right, a four report in the presentation of what I would like the board to do moving forward.
Anything else?
Oh, Happy Thanksgiving and exactly what she said.
Yes, Ms. Mayor, just wanted to remind everyone that please be aware of fraud. A very good friend of mine that lives in Toberna hired a roofing contractor and paid him four thousand dollars down for the materials. He had two thousand dollars worth of materials delivered to his house and he had a signed contract with him. He had two thousand dollars worth of materials delivered to the house and then told him that he wasn't gonna be able to do the work and didn't have the money to give him back. So, just still be aware that there are some contractors out there that, you know, you just need to, to check on them and get references. And other than that, Happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. The manager and I will be in Asheville Thursday and Friday this week at a meeting.
I spoke with the manager and Matt today about, they're still, we have different organizations that are still here helping individuals with their homes and the debris that they're putting on the street is, is, is behind the schedule that we have for pickup. So, they were sharing with me today that they would need to have the organization to call Matt up at his office to let them know that they're putting something out on the street to be picked up. Because the deadline, who is the deadline? Excuse me?
Last week, fifth, no, you're right.
Last week was the deadline for the pickup, for the debris. And so, I was getting calls, so I, I reached out to the manager and Matt to find out what we need to do because the streets are filling up again. You know, the ones, I mean, it's a long schedule that they have to go to help, you know, the individual or some of the homes that was really hit pretty hard. And so, Matt, what is your number that we can give the people to call?
Six three nine seven five zero one.
That's the number that you can call. And Happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Yep.
That's it, sir.
Okay. That's the number for people to call to get their stuff picked up?
Yes.
If they want information about picking stuff up, that, what, what, I think Alderman Kenzie is specifically talking about is there are groups like Samaritan's Purse that are still offering assistance for helping folks with mucking and gutting houses that maybe they, that, that hasn't been done yet.
Right.
What we're asking is if those organizations will reach out to Matt at six three nine seven five zero one to let him know that there are upcoming projects that they're working on. We may be able to help facilitate that, but we do have to have a cutoff for C and D being thrown at the curb.
Right, right.
And that's the reason why the November the fifth date is there. But we do wanna work with our volunteer groups and agencies such as the Baptist Men, Team Rubicon and, and Samaritan's Purse, some of these other ones that are helping us out with, with homes being muffed and gutted. So, if they will contact Matt at six three nine seven five zero one, we will help facilitate their, their collection.
Alderman Best.
Yes, I do. Mark, you gave us two important dates and you gave me the December seventh date. What was the January date? It was talking, going-
It was talking, going, I didn't get, what was that important date that was for January?
It's a great question. Let me see if I can find it, uh, if you've got anything.
I know the December seventh was the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program and then you had a January date.
If you, if you'll move on your next thing, I'll find it for you.
Yes, why are you looking for your date? Um, also, I just want to know, um, have the city been contacted whether or not FEMA has actually bought in any, um, trailers or manufactured housing for people that are wanting these homes? Do, do, do FEMA contact the city when that?
Yeah, they contact directly to the citizen, the trailers. They've already been in Kinston for a while, but it's directly, they talk to the, to the person applied who, and they let them know you've qualified for it. That's what I've been told. You can talk to Maria Figaro, she can give you the whole lab, but that's what I've been told.
Thank you for that. Um, secondly, I, I just want to say, my heart goes out to the families of the forty-four individuals that's lost their lives in California, um, to the fire. Um, the destruction there is just catastrophic. I mean, I just couldn't imagine, um, having a family member living in California, so I'm, God bless them all, um, my heart goes out to them. And also, um, West New Bern Presbyterian Church, um, that's, um, run under the leadership of Pastor David Fuentes, hope I pronounced his name right, has some volunteers here in New Bern and they are, have been a tremendous help. They have reached out to me and they're over in the North Hills area, North Hills Drive areas and they're coming to the aid of some of the families over there, helping them to get their homes back so that they can actually move back into them. So I just wanna thank him for that. Um, and I think that was all I had. Yeah, that was it. Thank you.
Alderman Oden?
Nothing tonight, sir, thank you.
Okay, anything further to come for the board tonight?
Date, I, I, all I've got is January, Alderman Best, as soon as I find out that date, I'll let you know.
Okay. Can I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion, second to adjourn. I want to fair the motion, say aye. Aye, all opposed.